Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 21st, 2018 City Council meeting. And at this time, I would like to call the order, to order the meeting. And Chief, would you lead us in to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney?
Maria, Johnson Santos, Lewis, Silbera, Valalta.
Here. Item number four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Silbera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, Santos?
Second.
Motion by Silbera, second by Santos to approve the agenda stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item number four, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. And I would remind you that if you have cell phones, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening. This is the very time Geneva Brett lost.
Wait a minute, let me start this Geneva. Now it starts.
I'm still excited. Geneva Brett, Los Banos, and I'm, I bet I am the most excited person in this room tonight. Why, you ask, am I so excited? Because we have, we have, all of us within this community, and actually some folks that used to live here and don't anymore, have funded the grave marker program. Yee-haw. Is that not fantastic? We are going to have grave markers on the graves of all the veterans in the Los Banos Cemetery. As a member of the American Legion Auxiliary, we started this program in June trying to raise money well over $8,000, and our community has come up with that. We just reached our point. So we're ordering them, we'll be installing them next month and asking for some help from the community. We'll be asking the police department, the fire department's already volunteered, asking maybe 4H and FFA. What I'm asking of all of you tonight is that you make sure your veteran, or any veteran you know, is on the list at the cemetery. We have 550 veterans on the, on our, the American Legion Auxiliary's Facebook page. That's Los Banos, American Legion Auxiliary Unit 166. On Facebook, there is a list of all the known veterans. We're at 550. Posting that list, we learned of five other vets not on the list. So it's not something that's well-known, and we do not want to miss a veteran. So please check the list, call the cemetery, tell people you know who have a loved one that's passed away to call the cemetery to be sure, because this is going to be glorious. We're expanding the program from just Memorial Day. We'll do flag placement Memorial Day, Flag Day, Independence Day, and Veterans Day. It's going to be glorious, honoring, honoring our veterans. So we thank our community, and now again, we're calling on you to make sure that they're all recognized. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Okay, Tom, your turn. You're older than I am, I'll slow it down.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm Tom Bellotti. I'm a third-generation Los Bannison and probably have lived here longer than you guys just because of my age. But my grandparents were here, my mom and dad were born here, and basically what, I've got a real love for this community. I want to give you, I'm here to talk about Parks and Recreation. I'm going to try to give you a little background, hopefully there's enough time for it. I moved back here in 1970. I was hired by the City of Los Banos to be the Parks and Recreation Director. Prior to myself coming, Raleigh Gilliam, who was the first director, was here in the 60s, followed by Norm Ballswick, then myself. And once I went into family business, Tim McNally came to town, and then followed up by Rick Dalgrin. I'm disappointed the way recreation has gone in this town. The department has been eliminated and basically put into the Public Works Department. Your rec director, who I think Paul did a great job, and you got a good man in Mr. O'Brien, but they need support. They need a department, they need a budget, they need to be able to answer to themselves and answer to the council and not go through another department head. We're a growing community. I think the amenities in this community should be growing along with the housing. But all I see happening is the housing is growing and growing, and there's less and less for people to do. What we do have has gone to pot. We've got a swimming pool that no longer can be used, it's condemned. Knock the damn thing down. If you can't build another pool, at least get rid of that one. The children in this community cannot find a place to learn to swim. If you've got your own pool, it's one thing, but most of these families don't have a pool. And I think we need a public pool for the children. We used to have a real active recreation commission. Back in the old days, it was made up of members of the communities, members from the school. Emory O'Banion, the county supervisor, was on it. And they helped to guide, guide the department along and help pull in the resources to make things work. I think that's probably really about all I've got to say, but I want to see Los Banos become more than a bedroom community. I want to see people move here, stay here, retire here, and for the reasons that the amenities are there to make it an enjoyable place for them to live. Thank you very much, and appreciate the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
I'm Will York, 1848 St. Patrick's Drive. Have a couple of things. I've been here 20 years, and I've saw my street, live on St. Patrick's, go from hardly any cars to just jammed most of the time. In the last few weeks, cars, the police estimated that the car that came down my street was doing 70 miles an hour when he ran into the end of the block and went between two houses, broke off the gas line. Then just last Saturday night, we had another one ran into the tree at the other end of the block. So speed is getting to be a problem. It's one of the largest, widest streets in town, I realize that. And basically, studies have been that the wider streets do have higher speeds. The city of Menlo Park was having that problem years ago, and they took no parking on the streets. None at all. And it's amazing to look at those streets and no cars parked on them. Now, I said all that to say this, that we have three street sweepers in town. We have 260 miles of streets and curb and gutters. And it takes, my figures, 52 hours, man-hours, to do those curb and gutters. And it's one of the most stressful jobs on Public Works jobs, to drive that thing in and out of those cars every day. If you think about it, they got to go right beside that car that's parked on the street, in and out, and there's maybe a space to go in, back out, and they have to make sure that nobody's coming behind them. So it's a real stressful job. You end that, no parking on the streets, use your garage, what they're made for, or your parking spaces, whatever. That not only stops the maintenance primarily on your vehicle, because it's going straight down the street, back and forth, no left and right tires, you know, all that stuff. That's another thing. Now personally, Place Road between Home Depot and Play, St. Patrick's Drive is a mess. Has been for 17, 18 years. There's a place there that is sinking. It's been filled up with asphalt once, about three years ago, and it's starting to sink again. And as you go over the rail trail, before you get there, there's even cars that come there fast, because that's 40, 40, 45 miles an hour on Place Road. And some of them have hit that manhole cover, because the dip is so low, and the lower it gets, they drag bottom on that manhole cover. So that's my rant. Thank you for listening.
Well, would you please send Mark a picture of that exact area? Because part of that road may be county, I'm not sure. So, oh, hang on, Mark wants to say something. Okay.
Actually, that section of road is in the, is in the design phase for the next coming up fiscal year to be rebuilt in the year after that with some of the Measure V monies and stuff. And we're attempting to drop that bump too, across the thing at the same time. So you'll see a rebuild from about the most solid driveway at Home Depot to about St. Patrick's.
Oh, good. Cool.
Well, no, we, we had the funding, we just have to get the design going.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that answers that question.
Yeah.
So we'll get the, thank you. Okay. Let's see. Laurie, do you want to go? Okay, go ahead.
Lawrence Mitchell, 10:30 in Keshewell Court. I'm just calling, I guess piggyback a little bit off Mr. Bellotti said about the community center. You know, our coach here in Los Banos volunteered plenty of time out here with the community center. There's a lot of gang activity in Los Banos. I grew up here in Los Banos with the school and things like that. I never chose to join a gang, because we had activities, you know, summer activities and things like that. There's nothing out here for these kids to do. Nothing. I volunteer my time at the community center, coaching and things like that. The community center, last week, we had the basketball tournament. I think I might have wrapped about eight games, till my knees was hurting, you know, I'm sweating, I'm just out there drenched. But because they say they have enough, enough funds, I guess, you know, to, you know, I guess, help pay for refs and things of that nature. I'm on a recreation committee and things like that too. I really try to help out, just like what Mr. Bellotti said, the swimming pool is sitting up there, it's condemned, you know, I mean, we have a lot of needles and things like that on the track and in that, no telling what's in that thing. But knock it down. I mean, knock it down, put something there. No one can learn to swim out this thing. We don't have a swimming pool in the summertime when it gets just extremely hot out here. And just, I mean, it seems like the community center is just kind of like just there to just, to just defend for them. I can't say defend for themselves, but just kind of do their own thing. It's like, there's no funding, it seems like there's no help from the city. So, you know, just, I mean, if you guys can go ahead and just think about that, look into it, but help these kids out. There's a lot of kids out here, there's a lot of gang activity out here. I work at San Luis High School, tons of gang activity. If you're not doing anything, if there's no sports or anything for these kids to do, they're going to go run with these gangs. These gangs are going to run and recruit these kids. Sit there and, hey, come with me, kid. You know, the after-school community center, from like three to five, tons of kids go there, but that's not long enough. It's not long enough. We need to really figure out something for these kids in this town to do, you know, and just to discourage them, I guess, you know, from going the wrong route. Because it really helped me out, you know, back when I was a youngster. I know like, just for like, for example, Dos Palos, they, kids don't even pay to play football out there. You know, and there's a lot of kids out here that don't have the money. They don't have the money to go out here and pay, you know, whatever, for whatever sport, so you're just kind of left out. You know, so, you know, you guys go ahead and think about that, you know, think about the youth out here in this community. You know, like I said, gang activity is rising, but if we do have something in order for these kids to do over the summertime, not just during school or school sports, you know, it'd help out a whole lot. Okay, so again, Lawrence Mitchell, thank you all so much.
So I can tell you that we are in the process of starting a Boys and Girls Club here in Los Banos. And we have, the city has agreed to, at no charge, to donate the community center to the Boys and Girls Club. And that hopefully should be starting this summer with programs that'll be running in the late afternoon, early evening.
Right.
So that's, that, that will be starting shortly.
Yeah, I'm volunteering for that also.
Thank you.
But you know, just as far as that, I mean, it's still going, it's kids that aren't, that don't have enough money, they still have to pay to do.
Not this.
Not that one?
No.
The programs I've seen, they, they cost money.
Hey.
So, you know, just, just out there, and just like I said, summertime is a really big thing. There's no, there's no school, things like that. Just get these kids something to do.
That's my understanding at this time, and we will get more information, but, but the city has said there is a need, and so we're volunteering the community center, and, and that's where it will be housed for after-school programs and summer programs. And we're hoping to get as much volunteerism that we can and, and public support.
And, and yeah, and help the community center, you know, I mean, help them out.
Okay, now, now let me, let me tell you something else. We don't own the swimming pool. The swimming pool is owned by the, the school district. We, we have never owned the, the swimming pool. The swimming pool was taken out of commission when the other pool was built at Pacheco High School. But the board felt that it was too deep on the deep end. And, well, that's their feeling. It's six feet.
Right.
So, so I just need to tell you that we do not own the pool. And all the pool area is not owned by the City of Los Banos. We own the park, we do not own the pool. Okay?
Yes.
So I just wanted to let you know that.
I mean, so I went to the school board meeting, and they kind of say, I was talking about the track. The track, I mean, the track is ridiculous. I mean, shin splints galore, our coach tracked theirs, shin splint, knee injuries, I mean, you shouldn't, you shouldn't run on every single day.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't own the stadium or the track either.
Understandable.
Okay.
But it's just our kids in Los Banos go to that school.
Right.
You know, so let's just make sure they, they're treated. Pacheco, I call it the Purple Palace, you know, they have all the good things over there, Pacheco, but again, that's a school thing. But let's just make sure we keep our kids active, you know, I'm busy.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you. Okay, Laurie.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laurie Bellotti, and I'm a resident of Los Banos. And I want to give you just a little bit of background that will lead into why I'm here. Three years ago, my husband, Tom, and I were introduced to the sport of pickleball. And I don't know if you know what pickleball is, but it is the fastest-growing sport in North America right now. And when we wanted to play this sport, we went to Paul Cardoza and asked him if we could play at the community center. And he graciously gave us time at the community center to play there, and we really appreciated it. At the time, we had maybe four or six people. And since then, since April 2015, we've been playing there, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 9:15. And we have now over 30 players of all ages, and we really can't even accommodate anymore, because we only have two courts, so there's a lot of waiting going on, you know, in between our games. But I think I can speak for everyone who plays pickleball and tell you that this active and competitive sport has been a wonderful and healthy experience for all of us. And I feel that we need more things, more activities like that in Los Banos to accommodate all ages, just like this gentleman was saying. Getting back to when Tom and I thought about where we could play pickleball, we first drove around and we checked out the city tennis courts, because we used to play tennis there when we were younger. Well, there is not an operating city tennis court in Los Banos. And that really disturbed us, because the question that we had was, where would children and adults in Los Banos have a chance to learn and play tennis? Well, nowhere for free. So that, you know, that was something that we knew we couldn't do, because that would be too big of a, an investment to, you know, fix those courts, when we just wanted to do this little grassroots effort to get started playing pickleball. And then, we're already, already aware that there was no swimming pool for the kids in Los Banos. And we, our question again was, where are the children of Los Banos going to learn how to swim? And what are they going to do during the hot months of the summer to keep busy and active and healthy? Well, I know the swimming pool that's closed now is not owned by the city, but I sure would like to see a campaign to save money, or, you know, put money into a fund for a swimming pool, because that's a really important, would be a really important part of, for our city. It's my hope that the City Council, well, well, actually, facilities need to be upgraded. All the recreation facilities need to be upgraded to meet the needs of all ages in our growing community. And activities need to be added to serve from tiny tots to senior citizens. There just, a lot needs to be added. So it's my hope that the City Council will decide to make recreation a priority in Los Banos, so folks living here have an attractive place to live, work, and play. And we would like to attract people to Los Banos to come and work here, and we also want people to stay here once they retire. I would like to see a recreation department with a recreation director and a dedicated recreation budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We held, I'm not supposed to talk, so my, my leg is far enough away from Bill, so he can't kick me. But I will tell you that these are the very concerns that we addressed at our workshop last week, and, and talked about this. And if the community is, is really serious about helping us to raise funds, we've also discussed avenues for that. And a funding source for, for different activities, of which I don't want to go into tonight very much, but in the coming weeks, we will be bringing that forward. So all the things that you've talked about, we've, we've already addressed and are working on plans to mitigate the circumstances. We even brought in a pool contractor a year or so ago to, to discuss fixing up the old pool, and, and, and he said, tear it down. He says it's so outdated, he said, we don't know what's under the ground, we don't know, we can't even rebuild that shell. So a new pool facility is around $3 million, and then with the, the houses, the, the buildings that surround it, we're probably talking about a $5 million structure. So it's something that we're very much aware of, something that we want. Everyone on this council, I think, wants the same thing. And it's looking for the money and, and paying for it, but we're already working on some avenues with, for the betterment of Los Banos. And if the, if the voters would join in in some of the things that we put forward, it, it could be great for Los, it could be a good thing. Could be a good thing. So I, Laurie, I'll be in contact with you. Okay? All right? And, and I would say that if you need extra time for the pickleball, would you please, at your earliest convenience, talk to Mark Faison and to Michael O'Brien, and set up a meeting with them ASAP, so they can discuss with you the, the positives and any negatives with using the courts even more and, and expanding your league? So I, that, that's what I would ask at this point, and then they can come back and report to us. Okay? So you're not, nothing that anyone has said has fallen on deaf ears. And we're working with the Boys and Girls Club, and, and hopefully that, that's a go, and we've already had some good results, but like everything else, it takes money. But the city has decided to commit the community center as a building. So it's going to get even more use. So that's where we're at right now. You know, I just didn't want you to walk away and think that, thank you very much for your comments. It's not what we need to do. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Yes. No, you can address it at item eight. Okay. If you'd like to address it now, you can, but you can wait till item eight to address it. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public forum? Yes. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Rod Bartlett.
Wait a minute, let's start you, go ahead.
I'm Rod Bartlett from St. Patrick's Drive. I just want to hitchhike on the last two people. I think that's a great idea with the kids. And I see that thing in Fresno where once a year, they sell a newspaper to fund one of the hospitals? I think we should do like, something like that here in Los Banos, that to be, just before summer, have some kind of event to get the community to chip in money to help for the kids. I think that'd be a great idea. I don't know if it's selling the newspaper or what, but something like that. I mean, I would chip in. So let's try that.
I'll remember you when we're, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to public forum? Yes, come on.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Posey. I'm a resident of Los Banos. First of all, thank you. First of all, thank you to the mayor, the city council, chief of police, city manager, and the city attorney for all the beneficial services all of you provide. I'm in support of the idea to once again have a city of Los Banos Recreation Department for youth, adults, and seniors. My personal recreational games experience in Los Banos has been playing pickleball at the Los Banos Community Center and at the Los Banos Fitness and Racquet Club. I would like to see all forms of recreation proliferate in Los Banos. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
I'm John Fulton, Los Banos resident, Mr. Mayor, council members, distinguished staff. I'm glad to hear that you're responsive to the, the speakers. Sometimes I feel like I'm talking in an echo chamber. I've been coming to this forum for twenty years on the same issue about bicycles. And I've offered myself as a, a person to lead any of you that are interested for a bicycle ride around the city. I've had one person take me up on it, Mark Knapp, retired commander of the, of the, the police department, was on a, a committee here. He's the only person in twenty, over twenty years to take me up on that offer. So I'm still here, willing to take any of you for a bike, a bike ride around the city, show you some of the issues, some of the dangers, the reasons that I see impediments to recreation and children getting exercise, why I see it getting less safe for, for our students at the schools. And ways we may be able to turn that around and encourage the students, encourage our young people to get healthier. So if you want to go for a bike ride, let me know. I know that you're looking at this evening's agenda item. You're going to vote on or discuss the bike plan, a little historical perspective. Before the previous bike plan by Nate Marchoki was even conceived, the bike plan definition was for commuters. He wrote it for recreation, but didn't have any connections. So my, uh, my applause for the new effort. We're looking at a commuter bike plan, but we still want to encourage recreation, as you're hearing from other people tonight. So we want to know how we can encourage the two systems to tie together. So this is a, a big step, but until we have people that have ridden bikes who are fully engaged in writing the plan, I don't think we're going to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Nope, can't speak again. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now call, uh, close the public forum. Oh, come on up, come on up.
My name is Steve Saquara, uh, and I've lived in, I live in Los Banos, I've lived here thirty-seven years. I worked at the hospital for that entire time. Uh, I'm here to speak in support of Tom and Laurie and Sarah regarding the recreation. I just recently retired, and I, learning to play pickleball, it's been a great thing for me. But we have very limited services in Los Banos. We either, we have the two courts at the community center, which is limitless, and actually, Laurie said we have thirty, I think we have closer to forty, uh, people playing. I've played at various places, I played a tournament in Visalia, they have huge courts, they're beautiful. And, uh, they're city courts. I play often in Morro Bay, I grew up in Morro Bay, and that's a small town, maybe ten thousand people. And they have beautiful courts. So I really just wanted to speak in support of Tom and Laurie. Thank you.
Are they interior or exterior?
Exterior.
Exterior?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to item, uh, six, consideration approval consent agenda. Thank you all for coming this evening, very much appreciate that. Oh yeah, if you'd like to stay too. Well, that didn't work. Okay, item number six, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and were voted on in one motion, uh, unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have, Lucy?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers two zero nine four eight one through two zero nine seven three zero in the amount of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Minutes for the March ninth, two thousand eighteen adjourned city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number five nine four four, authorizing the application and acceptance of San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Public Benefit Grant Programs for the purchase of five hybrid vehicles for the Los Banos Police Department. City Council Resolution Number five nine four five, authorizing a word of construction contract to McElveney, Inc. in the amount of two hundred thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and five cents with a twenty percent contingency in the amount of forty thousand dollars for the Iowa Avenue Waterline Replacement. City Council Resolution Number five nine four six, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Willden Financial Services for a comprehensive user fee study and a full cost allocation plan and adopting a revised budget for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year as it pertains to expenditures. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to remove, a city council member wishes to remove an item for discussion? Not seeing or hearing anyone, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motioned, uh, by Lewis, seconded by Santos to approve the consent agenda as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, carried. Let's go on to item seven, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, uh, at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item seven A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration to repealing and amending in its entirety, Chapter One, Title eleven of the Los Banos Municipal Code Regarding Business Licenses. Item seven A one, ordinance number one one six three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Banos, repealing and amending in its entirety Chapter One of Title eleven of the Los Banos Municipal Code Regulating Business Licenses. And tonight is a first reading and reintroduction. And so we're going to go to Director Elms. And where is she? Okay, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council.
Okay. Mr. Vaughn?
Am I on?
You're on.
So thank you very much, uh, apologize, I'm a little under the weather tonight, as I was last time I presented this, which was February seventh of two thousand eighteen. It was the first reading and a first reading and introduction at that point. And at that public hearing, we received some comment from Ms. Brett concerning real estate agents, and then the matter was introduced unanimously and continued to February twenty-first. On the twenty-first, or prior to the twenty-first, we received some public comments, some questions regarding the ordinance, and so we felt that, staff felt that it was appropriate to slow down the process a little bit and address those comments. And those comments were basically centered around real estate agents, the applicability of the ordinance, uh, the business license ordinance to them. So what, what I prepared to do tonight, unfortunately, you don't get to see my PowerPoint, but I'm going to run through just a brief, uh, overview of the ordinance, and make a couple of comments to you regarding, uh, the information supplied by, uh, the public that we responded to. The ordinance, uh, has been in effect for some forty years and has not been significantly updated since its original inception. Uh, there are two types of business license ordinances in the state of California that are allowed, uh, the city is allowed to adopt. One is what's known as a regulatory ordinance, which provides for a framework for, for the city of Los Banos to regulate businesses that are not otherwise exempt, regulate those businesses that are conducting business within their boundaries. Second type of, uh, business license ordinance is a pure tax, where for the, um, privilege of doing business within the city, you're taxed based on your gross receipts. The city of Los Banos has a regulatory type ordinance, not a taxing ordinance. And so our goal with the revamping of this ordinance was to make the ordinance, bring it up to date and actually have it be an actual regulatory, uh, ordinance. Secondarily, the ordinance has, in historically, been kind of a registry as well. And it's been used by the city as a tool to kind of track the type of businesses that are coming and going into the town, and that, that tool is not going to leave, um, through this revamping, we're just beefing up the regulatory portions of the, the business licensing itself. So just a brief overview of the key provisions of the, of the proposed ordinance. Um, we've, we've changed the title of the ordinance to, right now it's, for some reason, prior to Mr. Vaughn being the city attorney, it was entitled, uh, Business License Taxes. And as I explained earlier, it is not a tax, it's a regulatory ordinance, where the city regulates, uh, businesses that are doing business within the town. So we changed the title of the ordinance to reflect exactly what it is, it's not a tax. Secondly, uh, we reorganized the, the ordinance into six chapters. Makes it easier to read, easier for the public to understand, hopefully, and easier for staff to sift through it when there's an issue regarding the ordinance. So it's a total kind of a reorganization of the ordinance from what it is now. If you read it now, uh, it, it really, we're not keeping much of the old ordinance. And if you read it now, you'd kind of like shrug your shoulders and say, what, what is that ordinance really doing? What we've done is we've proposing that the Community and Economic Development Director take over the business licensing from the finance department. The, like I said, the ordinance will become more of a regulatory tool, and the way we're going to do that is, to the extent that we can, um, we are going to, or the, the economic and development, Community Economic Development Department will be looking at adding some conditions to some of the licensing. And those conditions are going to be aimed at making businesses maybe more of a good neighbor to their neighborhood, make sure that the, uh, the buildings in which the businesses are operating are safe for the public. And it's just going to be a little bit more teeth to the ordinance, other than you just pay your sixty bucks, sign up for your license, and you're out the door. There's going to be a little bit more to it than that, uh, I don't believe that every, every business activity in the, uh, city will be heavily regulated. Those that are problematic and those that do require a little bit more scrutiny from the city will get that through this ordinance. There are certain types of activities in the city that do warrant a little bit more supervision in terms of the regulatory nature of the city. We've also added, which is new, is we're added a portion that would require owners and renter, owners who are leasing or renting their properties in terms of multifamily of four more, four more units, four or more units will be required to get a business license. And that's the first step in starting to take, take hold of apartments and multifamily residential units that are subpar, and we want to make sure that we have a good handle on those, and we're going to start with a business licensing program that's going to include some inspections of those and other types of businesses within the city. So that, that's new to the ordinance. So to the, to the extent that businesses aren't exempt by state law or federal law, anyone engaged in business within the city will need to apply for a business license. So it's going to be an easy application process, as Stacy will show you in the second part of this presentation. And it's our, it's our goal and our intent, uh, to do a better job in terms of those businesses that maybe require a little bit more of a closer look, so that we're making sure that the, the public is adequately protected to the, to the extent that we can protect them. The ordinance does also something new, it's going to, and there seemed to be a need for this. They're going to have three levels of, of licenses. The typical license will be for one year, and it will be pretty, pretty much a permanent type license. But we're also going to offer interim licenses and temporary licenses for those folks that come into town for a brief period of time to do business, and they're not intending on staying. And the nature of their business doesn't require that they have a business license, an annual business license that's renewed annually. A lot of cities offer that, and we decided that we should too, so a lot of times that would be like your trades and your contractors who come in for a project, a short job, they're required to have a business license. Uh, once the job is over, they leave, and there's really no need for them to have an annual license. So we're going to be offering, uh, short-term licenses to those types of businesses, and they can choose which type of license they want. We've hopefully streamlined the process, number one, and number two, we've come up with what we think is a, a fair process for suspension, revocation, or denial of, of, uh, of a license. So the, the ordinance is, uh, I think the title of the last PowerPoint was new and improved. It's really new, improved, rewritten, revamped, and we're looking forward to, to setting it forward and, and, uh, and implementing it. We're not, we're not really, uh, plowing any new ground here, these ordinances are very, uh, usual within the state of California. We've taken what we think are some of the better, uh, ideas from ordinances around California and incorporated them into ours. I think there'll be a seamless transition from what we have now. I don't know that the public will even notice a big difference in how they deal with the city. Those people that are engaged in activities that, uh, need to be regulated a little bit more will, will see a little bit of a difference in the way their license is treated. But for the most part, uh, it'll be business as usual. Like I said, we did get some comments, uh, and Ms. Brett spoke to you regarding the applicability of this to, um, sales agents and real estate agents. Her opinion being that it shouldn't be applicable to them. She forwarded to the council a number of points, and I'm not going to go through those, but the staff did think it was important to, uh, provide the council with responses to those, and those are in your packet. We believe that the city has the authority through its police powers to regulate businesses to the extent that we're not stepping on state regulations, and it's not, that's not the intent of this ordinance. Given the time, uh, it's been about six weeks since this was first introduced. We decided to take a second look at the ordinance that you introduced in early February. And what's attached to your, to your packet tonight are a few changes that I, I want to, uh, highlight for you from the ordinance that you introduced, uh, in early February, and that's why we're asking for you to reintroduce it. Because it's enough of a change from what you introduced that, uh, the law requires that we somewhat start over. So, we wanted to make it clear, for instance, in the purposes of the ordinance, that the ordinance, the main focus was regulatory, which is not a change from what the purpose is now, just add some teeth to it. But we also wanted to make it clear that it was also a, a registration, a registry type. We also wanted to make it clear that it was also a registration, a registry-type ordinance so that we can keep data on the type of business classes that are doing business in, in the city, and it's a tool for economic development when they go to be recruiting retailers and industrial users to know what other, what other businesses are doing business in town. So we wanted to make that clear in the purpose. We took a second look at whether or not a commercial landlord should afford more commercial units, should be required to, to have a business license, and it was the opinion of staff that most tenants that go into a commercial building are going to get their own business license, which is going to trigger the inspections that we want. And so it really didn't make sense for a commercial shopping center, for instance, that's leasing out a number of their spaces to have its own business license, because most of those businesses, if not all of them, will have a business, be applying for a business license themselves. So that's why we deleted that portion of, of the, of the ordinance that you introduced last time. I think we made one other change to make it clear in terms of what we were doing, and that appears on page 12 of the ordinance. And that, that deals with, I think we had words like, we didn't have, we, we did not have to, or we could deny a license to someone who did not meet the qualifications necessary to be engaged in the business they, they want you to. On reflection, and frankly, from some of the things that Ms. Brett brought up, it's really not our intent to look behind the qualifications of a professional. That's typically dealt with, with a state agency. Of note, there are probably, I looked it up, there are over 200 or 300 types of professions that are regulated by the state of California in terms of qualifications, and that's not something we want to do. We just simply want to regulate them in terms of the type of business that they're doing in Los Banos. So we, we decided that what we're really doing with those that are licensed from the state, lawyers, accountants, doctors, those types of people, even though they need a state, a business license from the city of Los Banos, we're not going to be looking at their qualifications, but we are going to be checking and make sure that they do have the appropriate permits or licensings that are required for their profession before they do conduct business within the city of Los Banos, as well as any other reasonable regulations regarding their building, so on and so forth. So we just want to make it clear, and so we changed that on Section 111.1.401 to strike the words qualifications. Again, it's not the city's intent to be giving a doctor a written exam on how to practice medicine, as well as a, a real estate agent written exam on how to, how to conduct themselves in terms of their activities, but those things that are focused in on city issues, we will be, we will be regulating beyond qualifications. I think I indicated in some of the responses that the processing may be as simple as just verifying that, in the case of a professional, that they had the appropriate permits or licensing from the state. In the case of a building contractor, that they have the appropriate contractor's license to engage in the type of business they're going to engage in, in the city of Los Banos, but we're not going to be looking at qualifications. So just kind of a cleanup of the ordinance that you introduced last time. And I think that's about it. If you, if you'd like any more in depth or have any questions, I certainly can answer them. Stacy has some information for you regarding the over, the, what's it called?
Open counter.
Open counter application process. And she's going to give her part of the presentation. And what we're asking for you to do tonight is open the public hearing, allow comment, listen to that comment, and then consider this ordinance, and we're recommending that you waive the first reading and reintroduce the ordinance as we've amended it attached to your packet.
Okay, let the record reflect Mr. Faria's presence at 7:41. And now let's go to Director Elms.
So I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. All right, hang on. All right.
Okay. So it's a bit fuzzy to see on the screen, but I wanted to demonstrate for the public tonight that we are currently live on the city's website at losbanos.org with our interface application, open counter, that we use as a business and zoning portal. We do have our online business license application. So it helps create a more, more complete application for my staff to be able to process and be more efficient. So this walks the business owner through a series of questions, and as they answer those questions, it creates a more complete application submittal. And then at the end, I will show you, they will print their PDF version of their application, and then that is what they submit to City Hall, to the Community and Economic Development Department, well, essentially to the Finance Department first to pay, to pay for their business license. So that's the first screen. When you enter, when you go to losbanos.org, under the home screen, you would, there's various headers, one of which is doing business, and you would click on doing business. It would, it would take you to the open counter portal. So then there's an overview. It asks for things, which, I apologize, it's really hard to see, project type, location, permits, fees, and then it gives you a summary of what all of that is. So after you answer some simple questions, it's, it's going to direct you whether your use is permitted, whether that zoning is, is acceptable for your retail use in the mixed-use zoning district. And then it'll let you know what the cost of that business license, what it's anticipated to be, its estimate. And then you would click on the permit application, and that's for the business license, and it's all of the business information. So you would fill out, you would answer these questions electronically. I just did a test, and that's what's up there. And then what's really cool at the end of this application process is that you can sign your application electronically. So for mobile devices, open counter is, it works well with, whether it's your iPad or any other type of tablet, or your iPhone or Android device, and you can sign your application electronically. So all you need to do when you're done is hit next and done, and it creates a PDF. So your business license application, you would fill that out. There's a little box underneath that says, of your application that says, thank you for completing your business license application. There's one more step, please print out your business license application. And then if you have any questions, it has a appropriate contact within the Community and Economic Development Department and an email address. So as you're going through this process, if first, if you don't fill out a required box, or of required information, it won't let you finish the application. It's going to let you know you've left something blank. It's also going to prompt you, based on how you answer questions, it'll open up then other series of questions. So it's, again, just to provide a more efficient process and a more complete process for the Community and Economic Development to process the business license application. And so it's accessible right now, as I said, at losbanos.org, and that's the end of the demonstration. Thank you.
All right. So at this time, do we have any questions from the council? The public hearing? Okay, let's go to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stacy, once the applicant completes the application online and it gives them a dollar amount, can they pay online? They have, or do they have to come into City Hall?
They do have to come into City Hall currently, right now, as our, our process is configured, but hopefully in the future, we'll have the ability to accept online payments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council before I open a public hearing? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1163. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Good evening, Geneva Brett, Los Banos, and I am delighted that the ordinance is being revamped, because it certainly needs to be revamped, streamlined, and that it's online, that's great too. I have a client that's working with Stacy right now that has been using this and it, and it's great. I also appreciate the courtesy, Stacy letting me know what was coming, that this was up and going to be on tonight's agenda, and providing me with the link to the agenda packet so I could see what the responses were to my questions, I appreciate, or my statements. I appreciate that very much. I appreciate you taking the time to consider what I have to say. I'm very grateful to live in this great country where I can disagree with you, and I don't get in any trouble for that. I'm not thrown in jail. I have the opportunity to stand up and say what I think, and to me, it's very important that I do exercise that right. I'm not going to rehash everything that I've said two or three times already. Well, I've said it a few years ago many times, but just recently, there's no point in doing that. You've all read what I have to say. I still disagree with you, but I know that doesn't make a difference. I understand that the, the council relies on the city attorney's opinion to protect the city and the investigation of staff, everything that everybody, they're relying on that to protect the city and using that as their best judgment to go forward. I have a couple of questions. Well, one statement that, using this as a tool for economic development when reaching out to other cities, areas, trying to recruit, I don't think that's going to be totally accurate. Again, going back to, it's just a thing, I think it, I, my opinion remains the same that it's discriminatory in that if you know somebody is, in my instance, a real estate professional, they're going to have to get a license, if not, if you don't know that. I'm wondering if all the people in healthcare that receive payment by 1099, which makes them an independent contractor, if they're going to be required to obtain a license, and if it's going to be the same type of thing. And I would also like to know if the registry, well, you said that this is going to be also for a registry, will that be available to the general public so that I can look at myself when I'm recruiting, trying to get someone to come here, sell a piece of commercial property, and say, these are the type of businesses we have here, et cetera, et cetera, or just to create my own demographic profile of the community in which I work? Will that be available to me online? So again, my thanks for the courtesy, for the consideration. Still don't agree with you, not going to agree with you, but I appreciate the time and the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing on item, on ordinance number 1163?
Couple of questions. St. Patrick's Drive, of course, I'm looking at my little bit of the world, was originally supposed to be...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Will York, 1848, St. Patrick's Drive.
Los Banos is good.
Los Banos, California.
Okay.
Yeah. St. Patrick's Drive was originally supposed to be all two stories with a garage with an apartment above. Some finished, depend on whether you wanted to pay to get it finished when you had the house built. So if I heard right, you're only going to require a business license for four. Okay.
To start.
To start, because all of...
This is a living document, so anytime we can amend that document, but we thought we'd start with the four.
Okay. So that brings me back to the car problem on St. Patrick's Drive, where we have five, six-plus cars on some houses down towards the end where they first started building the two stories. And they do have people living in the back of those residents, single-family residents. So I'm just wondering about that. The other thing is, business licenses in residential are one. My understanding is that there's to be no traffic in or out of a residence if you have a business license there. Is that correct?
There are regulations for home businesses, and if there are questions about the home business that, that you have concerned about, concerns about, I would like you to contact Community and Economic Development, Development Person Elms, and then she can tell you and guide you from there whether we need code enforcement to go out and, and amend anything that's, that's going on.
I just want to make sure that I'm right, is, the way I read the code is that residence business license has no traffic.
Okay.
You can't have customers come...
I'm going to have the city attorney, I think you're on the right track, but I'm going to have the city attorney answer that.
So what this ordinance is doing is saying if you have a multi-unit rental with four units or more, you will need to apply for and obtain a business license. If you have, it's not going to go after the single-family residence who has a rental in the neighborhood, we're not going to be asking for a business license from that person. But if you have a complex with four units or more that you're owner-managing, you'll need a business license. As far as your second question regarding home occupations, that is through a different permitting process, and there's a, a different process for being allowed to run a home occupation in a residential district, but it does include the condition that you also get a business license. So you may have to, you would have to get a permit first to run your home occupation in a residential district and then get a business license. And there are strict rules, as you say, about home off, home-type occupations and doing business in a residential area, and that's beyond the scope of what this ordinance is doing tonight.
Oh, okay.
So yes, the, as I recall from the code, is that if you have a home occupation, you're not allowed to have, for instance, your customers come to your residence.
Correct, yeah. That's what I reckon, yeah.
There are some exceptions to that, and I think that is, for instance, small family daycares are essentially businesses, and obviously they're allowed to have their customers come to their home. But if you wanted to start a business out of your living room, it could not be the type of business where you would have a sign on your front yard, nor would you be able to have customers come and transact business in your residential...
Right.
Home. But two different things, a home occupation permit, and on, on top of that, you would need a business license.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you.
Bill, Will, I would ask you, though, if you have additional questions, please contact our Community and Economic Development Director.
Okay.
And then she can direct you to the proper source if needed to, in order to, to cure any ills that you may have, though, or that may be happening with a business, all right?
So there's a policing agency for...
The Community and Economic Development Director, all the permits go through her.
Okay.
Okay? And, and then, so we will know if, if someone's in compliance or not with the business that they're working out, they're working out of their house with. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tisha Blockwood-Friedas. Technically, I live in Merced County, but I also do business in the city of Los Banos. So I was just hoping for a little clarification, like what Geneva was stating. I have a home occupancy license through Merced County, because my residence is there, but I do do business as a consultant within the city limits. And I do know I have a couple of clients out of the Bay Area that come here and do business, so I just want to make sure that for them, I'm clear that independent consultants also have to have a business license or temporary license, as you said, or, like my husband's in sales, but he's employed through NNS Tractor, but he also gets 1099 from manufacturing companies. Does he also have to get a license? So just kind of hearing what Geneva said, I would like clarification on that, so.
So if you're engaged in business, other than being an employee of a business, you are, by definition, need a business license in the city of Los... are, uh, by definition, uh, need a business license in the city of Los Banos.
So, if I have a real estate agent-client, and she comes here to do business, she has to obtain-
If she's doing business in the city of Los Banos, she should be obtaining a business license.
And that's one of those, like, interim licenses?
No.
'Cause I doubt she'll be doing business if that's the case, so.
It'd be an out-of-town business license. It has its, a separate fee, um, than an annual business license, and it, it's, that's nothing that we're changing of the code now that's existing. We require, if you're outside of the incorporated city limits, you would still be required to, uh, apply for an out-of-town business license.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If you have any questions, just please come and see us right away.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
John Fulton, Los Banos. And I spoke last year a couple of times about solar panels, so I've got a question. Uh, we were looking at the, I know you've got a, a big responsibility of trying to balance your regulatory responsibilities with your fiscal responsibilities, whether you're looking at a tax to cover the costs, or you're trying to recoup costs for administering a program. And my comments previously were about the cost. You have a power here to regulate progressive things like solar panels on roofs for people that don't have much income, or you have a power here to prevent people from saving money on their solar panels. So, how you determine this rate for permits, for licenses, for businesses? Solar panels, according to PG&E, if you have solar panels, you are a small generator of power, which means you're a company. So, is that gonna be addressed here as requiring a, a new permit that's gonna stifle solar panels, or are you looking at trying to, to follow the state guidelines, state recommendations to promote solar as a way for the poor people to save money?
We will be following all the state regulations as it pertains to solar, and the installation person, that's the person that will have to have a business license within the city of Los Banos and the proper permits to make sure that the solar doesn't fall through your roof, and to make sure that this person has a proper licensure to, uh, to install those solar panels. That's what we're concerned about.
Two separate issues. You talked about your response.
You still have time left. If you wanna come to the, the podium, you can speak.
Thank you for the response. That addresses the permit issue for building permits. The new issue is the small electric generator, because you have the solar panels, now you become a power generator company.
Um, I don't think that meets the definition of engaged in business as we've defined it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we would not be looking at, uh, having a business license for a rooftop solar system on your house.
Okay.
I don't believe it meets the definition of engaged in business.
Because your power goes back into the grid, doesn't mean you're selling power to PG&E, necessarily.
It does according to PG&E.
Okay, but that's not what we're dealing with here.
Okay.
Okay?
So, that would be a new issue?
Uh, it may not be an issue at all.
Okay.
Okay?
So, an exemption may be needed.
No, I don't think it even meets the definition of engaged in business as we are defining it.
All right.
Yeah.
And a side note, the last, um, the last press release on losbanos.org, September 2016, so these issues could be put on those press releases, but there's been no press releases in the last 18 months.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum, or the public hearing on ordinance number 1163? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public, uh, hearing and bring it back to council level, and what I'm looking for now, if there are any, if there are any other questions by council? Okay, I am looking for the, um, uh, okay, I'm looking for the reintroduction-
Waiving the first reading.
And wa, I'm, I'm getting there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm looking at the reintroduction of the, uh, of, of ordinance number 1163 and the waiving of the first reading. So, if there's someone who'd like to make that motion, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1163.
Okay, and-
Is that gonna be a separate?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Okay, so I have, so I have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by, uh, Santos for the, um, the waiving of the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any negative? No, motion carried. Okay, let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reintroduce ordinance number 1163.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis and second by Santos for the reintroduction of ordinance number 1163. Uh, Director Maloney, roll call.
Perea?
Yes.
Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Malalta?
Yes, motion carried. All right, let's go on to item B, public hearing. If you receive, uh, public comment and consideration of the Los, to receive public comment and consideration of the Los Banos Bicycle Pedestrian Plan, which includes a vision for walking and bicycling in the city of Los Banos, policies to achieve the vision, planned bicycle and pedestrian networks, and a prioritized list of projects to develop a network and guidelines for elements. And we're gonna go to our Community and Economic Development Director, Elms. Oh, going to Mark. Okay, there we go.
I do have a PowerPoint if it's okay, so.
Oh, all right, all right, wait a minute.
There we go, right there.
Well, it should be that. I have to press these buttons. That's what I was told to do.
Okay. Today, uh, tonight, I'm gonna, we're gonna ask that the city council will approve the Los Banos Bicycle Pedestrian Plan by taking the following actions. Um, the first one would be, could, conduct a notice public hearing to solicit input on the plan, and the, the second one would be to adopt the resolution approving the City of Los Banos Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, and this is after this PowerPoint. As I start the PowerPoint, I'd like to, um, thank, uh, the Community Development Director Stacy and the MCAG staffperson Natalia Austin. They did a, a lot of work on this plan, and it's, and it's turned out pretty nice. Um... What's in the plan before you for approval? I'll just read down the list. It's a vision for walking and bicycling in the city, uh, and it encompasses future trails along the creeks and to get there, and along the extension of trails that we have now. Um, and we have policies in there to achieve this vision. We have planned bicycle and pedestrian networks that are based off staff recommendation and, uh, public, uh, meetings. We have, uh, and guidelines for elements such as, uh, wayfinding signs and bicycle parking, and that's in the plan also. The goals, the overall goal of the plan is, is to improve the bicycle and pedestrian facilities in Los Banos, make it easier and safer to go to work, to school, and to shop in Los Banos, and to walk and bicycle more often. It's pretty basically the plan that we're looking here to do. Um, it's quite an upgrade, and I think most people that was working on it, it's quite an upgrade from what we used to have. This plan has had a lot of effort, and each generation will get better, we hope, so. This is a, a direct slide off of the public meeting that the MCAG did, so I just wanted to show you one of the slides that they did, and it just, what's the goal, and it shows the percentage of what type of a bike rider you are. The first one is strong and fearless. Uh, we probably have one out here. Uh, and this was enthused and confident, 5%, and interest and concern, 51%, and 30 for, the 7% for no way I'm not getting on a street. So, the goal here is develop a system of bikeways that meet the needs of the community, trying to make people more, uh, comfortable with biking, uh, serving both the recreational and exercise users. Now, one of the main reasons I show this, this slide, it's a little off what the other ones are, is to show you that there was a lot of public input on this, and I'm just gonna go over some of the meetings that we did to get to this stage of we're at. Um, we did a December 4th, 2017 public workshop, and in that workshop, we actually, we'll show it later, we, we got, uh, we had the people that attended the workshop, uh, rate the projects that we had, and their rating actually, besides one flip-flop between two spots in the top 10, were the same rating as staff had, so it worked out very well. Um, we did have lots of comments at the workshop that we addressed. We had a couple of comments we got that are more general plan comments. The plan had to reflect general plan, but as a general plan gets updated, we will look at those comments that came in. So, so it's, they weren't forgotten, they just have to be done in the general plan first. The plan has to reflect the general plan. Then on January 16th, 2018, we went before the Parks and Recreation Commission and presented the plan to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Their only comment really was, there wasn't much connectivity between existing downtown and other areas. Uh, there's not a lot of room to extend things. This is mostly over areas that are unapproved. Uh, they did unanimously, and I think there was only three at the meeting, unanimously did approve the, the plan to, to pass on to the Planning Commission, which the Planning Commission on January 24th, 2018, Stacy presented this to them. There was some discussion, but overall, I think it was an unanimous approval to pass it on to the city council. So, we have, we've had a lot of public input, and that's, the, the major reason to have a public meeting, too, tonight, is for, if there is more public input, it's good to have that in the plan. There's, the state gives certain criteria, and public input is very important on these plans. They have a whole list of things you have to have in these plans, and that's what we have been trying to meet. Goal two was to provide a safe, convenient network of bikeways interrelated with other modes of transportation throughout the city and the vicinity. That's a very typical goal. It's Caltrans' goal now, it's almost every jurisdiction's goal. It's made to, to be interactive with other modes of transportation and to, uh, provide the biking and the walkability in a community to make it more, to make exercise-friendly and, uh, more environmentally, uh, sensitive. Goal number three was to sustain a high-quality bicycle network by incorporating bicycle improvements and maintenance into city plans and processes. We do mention areas and future signage, future areas for bike racks, and how to do that, and that is mentioned in the plan as goals that we want to go after and to see in our subdivisions in the future, and to actually, uh, make it a living document that actually we see on the ground as, uh, things improve. Now, on this proposed projects, it's like I, it, the first thing we'll show on the proposed project is just, this is mainly the bike area, the bike path and what it shows, and it's a totally separated path from any street, uh, as the rail trail is, as the canal trail is, and it's just a, a detail that shows what a typical would be. It's eight feet with four-foot shoulders, and this is, when we talk bike path, this is what we're talking about in the plan. The second one would be the bike lane, and as you see, they're not, they're actually not dimensioned because they change, and the MUTCD does change them, and anytime we put something in, we will meet the MUTCD requirements. They do change occasionally, but this is a bike lane that's actually striped and signed in the street. That's what the bike lane is. That called, that's called Class 2, and if, as you look at the proposed projects, Class 2 would be bike lane, Class 1 would be, uh, the bike path. The third, Class 3, is a bike route, which is actually, uh, non-stripped, shared use, uh, does have, um, signage, and it's just a, a share of the street with the, uh, the vehicles in the street. Here's a, here's the proposed bikeways of, that are, have, we're recommending on this plan, and, um, it's interesting on these, you'll also see these in our top 10 list. The bikeways will show Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, and, and I will talk a little bit more about this, but this is the bikeways that, that we're recommending at this point that everyone really liked. You can see that it goes all the way out to Henry Miller, it goes along the creek, all the way up to Pioneer, and you can make the loop all the way down to, uh, Henry Miller on the other side of town along the San Luis Canal. So, eventually, we would like to have just a wonderful bike path, pedestrian path that circumvents the city. They, and then, there's also areas that will bring people over to the Walmarts and the Targets of the world by routes and by bikes. So, it's, it works both ways. So, it's an aggressive plan, but it's, without any vision, we would never get there. So, this is what this is about, is to, to have some vision, uh, in, in our community, so we have, uh, this very beautiful amenity that we can use, especially the bike paths. The next one is just an, uh, an existing and a proposed bikeways map that's combined, and this shows the existing bikeways and paths that we have, combined with the last map that we saw. So, it's a little crowded, but you can see it shows the, shows the, uh, canal trail, it shows the rail trail, it shows, uh, areas like that, and how we're going to tie in with these. You can look at this particular map, and you can see, upon completion of these improvements, we really would have a very integrated bikeway and walkway, uh, uh, network in our city. This is where we get into our priorities, our top 10 priorities, and there's a list of Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, Bike Lane, Bike Path, Bike, uh, there's another one, did I miss it? Bike Route. Um, there's a list of these in here, and because they're in the plan, doesn't mean that they're not in the top 10, they can't get funded, or you can't jump ahead. There's, there's, it just, they want us to show a priority that the community looked at a little bit and agreed on. It doesn't restrict the other 50 not to get funding or not to jump ahead of someone else if we have a need for that at the moment, but this is just for our priority list. And as I said, from our public meeting, the top 10, except for, I think it was eight and nine switched, was exactly what staff had looked at and not told them, and it is exact, exactly the same with step 2 flipped, that flipped their spots. And I think what's very, very interesting about this, and I think very good, is the first one that was the top priority was the bike path to Merced College that we're all, that we're looking at now, that is actually our first RTP project that we're trying to get funded in the future with the RTP and maybe, maybe Measure V funds. And the second one, um, well, one of the, as you go down, we also have the Pioneer Corridor on there, and that was our second RTP project, as far as timeline goes, and that has a complete bike path in it from north, from east to west. So, a few of these do appear already on the RTP project, which is really good, and also Mercy Springs appears on, on that, and that's also on here also. So, uh, we, uh, we do have a cor, a correlation between the two that is really good. So, uh, we think that that wasn't on purpose, although, obviously, it appears on both, uh, and it's a good thing to have that. Anytime you're competing for funds, the more things these projects appear on, on lists and studies, the better you do. The next steps, uh, well, the first step is tonight, is if we can get the plan approved by the city council, which we're looking, which we're coming to you for. The second step would be to get MCAG Governing Board to approve the plan. The reason for this is, it's required that your local cog, your local transportation agency, approve your bike plan so you can compete for the funding that goes through them. And so, the actual plan that they will see will, will be a plan with, if we pass it, with the resolution attached to it, and then when they approve it, that resolution will complete the document. So, that's the actual final. But it is important that, and, and that they do this, uh, that they do approve this through their governing board. Um, and by the way, the time that they spent on this, which was quite a bit, was part of their normal, uh, it wasn't a fee to the city separately than what we do as, as a member of that agency. And then the, the third one is to start applying for funding. And the next, well, you see a little bit of the funding. It's, it's Active Transportation Program, Urban Forestry Grant, and that's just for green space, so we do have CalFire, we might be able to get something there. CMAC definitely is doable. We have a CMAC project that's being designed in about three months from now for, uh, eight, uh, 19, opening up at about $300,000, and they'll do some gap sidewalks that we need to get done. Uh, Remove 2 is actually, uh, had to look this one up, an air, an airborne grant which removes harmful admissions by, uh, putting some grant money towards bike paths. So, it's a, it's a definitely a thing that we can look at. Uh, and of course, Measure V local measures. We have the alternative modes that need to have, uh, I believe it's 20%, I believe that's what it is. Um, this plan will allow a more competitive application for grants. The grants don't necessarily get refused if, if you don't have a current bike and pedestrian plan, but you definitely lose points, and, and you don't wanna lose any points, because granting across, going for grants across the state is so competitive, so competitive, and we compete with a lot of large cities. So, you don't wanna lose any points, and, and having this, uh, approved by everyone and having a current, because our current one is, is too old. It's, it's not, it's not active now. We can't use it for any of our applications, so. So, that's my presentation. So, we're looking to, uh, open up the public hearing and then get comments and adopt a resolution if that's so, if that is your course of action. Thank you.
Okay, is there any, uh, council member with a question at this point? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mark, in part of the body of this presentation, it talks about enforcement, uh, on- Mark, in part of the body of this presentation, it talks about enforcement on page 19. Could you explain a little bit as to how this is going to happen? You know, there's, there's detailed information about the Police Department and traffic enforcement. But is there money built into grants that you're going to be seeking to help the Police Department offset their expense of doing this?
This enforcement action is in their normal mode. I mean, it's not on a high priority, but enforcement. No, bicycle, correct use of bicycles and bikes on paths it shouldn't be. That is in their normal mode now. Granted, it's not on their priorities. So we just have to make sure. We don't have funding for that. It just becomes a part of what they do in their normal day-to-day actions. If we can get some funding for that, we sure would look for it, yes.
And also, the C C I D Trail, Bike Trail, is also a walking trail.
Yes.
In this grant, will there be any money for any type of security, placement of security to make sure that residents are safe as they are riding and walking down these paths?
As we apply for grants, you mean lighting and issues like that?
Well, lighting, security cameras to make sure that people are safe.
Well, a lot of times the lighting actually isn't put up, put on the trails because we don't want people out there at night. But yes, we can do that. And as you put into the grant or as you, or as we design, like we designed the trail to the college, there is definitely opportunities to put up some cameras. There's no, there's no question about that. These grants, you have to do individually grant. To retrofit, we could look for some grants to do that too. But in future, we can look at that, the lighting of the trails and issues like that and security on the trails, we could definitely look at that. The, our concept on the trail to Merced College, I'm using that because that's the closest one to fruition, actually. We're getting some grab on that one right now. But we definitely will include lighting on that and we can include the cameras on that also.
Yeah, I think it's important, and it doesn't have to be at nighttime, but people walking those trails during the daytime, you don't have enforcement out there driving around. And so it certainly affords an opportunity if something comes up that the police can respond to an incident that may have happened out there on the trail as people are walking.
And also, councilperson, the bike paths are also, as you said, are pedestrian paths also.
Yes, okay. And then the other question is, under the bike class, the classes for the bike paths, it appears that you're mostly looking at Class One, Class Two Bike Lanes. But my question is, and I've seen it in other cities, you know, here in the valley as well as up in the Bay Area. And it's not quite the Class Four Bike Lane, but we have some Class Twos in Los Banos. But what I see is that people end up parking their vehicles on the street and it's in that Class Two Bike Lane. So then the bicycles, the bikes have to go outside of the lane sometimes, excuse me, to continue their route. Because if they're too, they're too close to the car, they may end up scraping someone's vehicle. So some of the other bike lanes that I've seen will have the parking area and they'll have a two, two stripe off area for a complete bike lane so that they have their own route on both sides of, you know, whatever particular street that they're doing those bike paths on. And then you have the lanes for your street traffic. So is that, would that be the same as a Class Three excluding the barrier? The upright barrier by painting extra, a painted line next to the vehicle where it's parked and then another painted line on the street to have a full bike lane for the bikers?
It would be more like a Bike One Lane just set away from the parking lane. It would be just like having the.
So the Bike One, I mean, the Class One Bike Lane.
I mean, I'm sorry, Class Two. It'd be more like the Bike Lane. It's just that it's not against the curb. And yes, you're right. And streets that are wide enough, that's something that we need to look at with the M U T C requirements.
Okay, so what I'm speaking of is more like a Class Two outside of the parking area.
Yes.
Okay.
And what you see now, you'll see, usually see a one stripe that's more than eight feet off on the curb that gives you enough room there instead of the two. That's what we have in, to meet our requirements. But I know a lot of cities do the double.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, you know, just as, my hope is that I hope that we would have that double stripe lane outside of the parking area so that there is a zone of safety for the bike rider. Because, you know, I've ridden my little bike, which is not a very good bike, one that my son gave me. And I felt a little bit insecure riding in that lane, knowing that somebody might open their door and smack me or, you know, that I might scrape someone's vehicle. So, you know, there's some safety issues there that I have concern about for bikers having the appropriate amount of space to do their biking in.
The, the other one in addition to this is we will be looking at our bike routes because it has been brought up to our attention that we need to pay more attention to the bike routes through the city as far as safety and, and what should be a bike route and what should be a bike lane. And we will be addressing that as a separate, as a separate issue than this. And that came up in many of our inputs. And we appreciate the input and we will be looking at that.
Okay. I had one other thing, but it's now slipped my memory. But I think those are the bigger things. And, oh, I know what it was. Just, you know, for a matter of statement, I think it was about two years ago the state of California passed a law indicating that whenever a vehicle is passing a biker, that they're supposed to slow their, their speed down. But that, you know, that's something that's very difficult to enforce. But hopefully, as we increase, start improving our bike paths here in Los Banos, maybe we could include some signage, you know, in the grants that we get to remind people to slow down as they pass a biker so that they're, they're not possibly causing an accident because they're, they're going the speed limit. So if the speed limit's 35, I think they have to slow down. If my mind serves me correctly, at least another 10 miles an hour as they pass a person riding a bicycle.
I believe safety reminder signs would be adequate in certain areas that we need to look at.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Hey, this time I'd like to open up the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 5947. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Freitas again. I didn't realize I'd be talking so much. But does, I couldn't really make sense of the map. Does this affect any of like Badger Flat from H Street? Because you mentioned Henry Miller, the creek.
Hold it. I'm sorry. There you go.
Badger Flat to H Street to Overland, that is our number three RTP project, and that includes bike paths.
And that's where the rails are, the rails are.
That has to be designed.
Okay.
That is part of the, when that road gets designed, it's such a heavy carrier of traffic to the Bay Area.
Right.
That is one of our RTP transportation projects that we have listed in there, including separated bike paths in that, in that area. So that is definitely a bike path area, and that is shown in the plan.
Okay, and then what was it from like Henry Miller to?
It's, it's down Henry Miller, along the creek. In other words, you want to take a bike path and wrap around all, and then Pioneer, wrap around the whole city, which is a good loop.
So will those properties be affected that are along the creek on Badger Flat?
Yes, yeah, though, this is a planning document. We'll have to get the right, the permission to be in the creek. We'll have to get easements. We'll have to get all that stuff in the future. That's why this is a planning document. There's, we do not have any of these rights to be there, but we have the right to plan it.
Okay, so like, just for all intensive purposes, would there be any like eminent domain situation with properties?
That would, that would be a council action. And I, most councils do not take eminent domain for bike, bike path type issues. We would rather negotiate that out.
Okay.
That is a council action though. It'd be hard, it'd be hard to meet all four requirements of eminent domain for a bike path.
So how should I keep my neighbors updated? Have them come to these meetings? Because it's now to the, to this department, the planning department's no longer, or the planning commissions?
What we'll do is this will be adopt, hopefully this will be adopted and we'll put it online and you can let your neighbors look at it. 100% of a planning document. When we get to the stage in the future, when we actually go out there and planning, we'll approach people and try to get permission to do this kind of stuff as we, as we go along. And if they want to come in and talk to me personally about a certain area, come on over to, over by Madison where the tank, the elevated tank is. I'm over there quite often. Just come in, we'll talk about it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing?
Louis, addressing your, your questions in particular. There are several enforcement issues. I think the most important one is that we need to protect the bicycles from cars. As you were saying, that right now we have some, they're called Bike Lanes, Category Two. And if you're in that and you're feeling unsafe, then California Vehicle Code, Section 21-200 says you should not be in that bike lane. You should be to the left of that lane. So if you get that white line, eight feet to the curb, but it should be eight feet to the gutter. So that's mistaken the measurement. So the, right now, they're eight feet to the curb, but the measurement's supposed to be to the street side of the gutter. So there's a foot difference. So they're seven feet rather than the eight. That's a separate issue. So the white line, eight feet from the curb or the gutter, is to designate where the cars are not allowed. It does not designate where the bikes are supposed to be. It has nothing to do with where the bikes should be. California Vehicle Code says the bikes should be as far to the right as is practicable. But if they feel unsafe because there are parked cars, they feel unsafe because of grates, because of gravel, because of mudslides or any other reason, they should be to the left of that. And the bike has the full authority and the full use of the full lane to the left of that white line. So does that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Every intersection is a crosswalk, whether it's marked or not. Similar pedestrians and bikes have the power of the road, if that's what you want to say.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing?
Bill York again. Back to cars off the street, residential areas. Not only does it work in Menlo Park, but safety, police safety. They can drive up and down the streets at night. There was a car parked there that shouldn't be there. They know something's going on and it, it works. There's a lot of documentation on, on how things have worked out for them. But in your presentation, you had the two bicycles and then the two cars. And the bicycles were against the curbs. There you go. If you don't have any cars parked there, safety, your safety goes up with your bicycle riders because the street has larger room for the cars and less problem for the bicycles. So something to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really familiar with Menlo Park. They don't have sidewalks or curbs or gutters either. So, I mean, the roads are, you can't get one car if someone's parked on the other side. Okay. Just a minute.
Hi, I'm Deborah Todd. I live here in Los Banos. And I wanted to thank Ms. Lewis for bringing up the safety issue on the path. It sounds like a great plan. The community we came from has a similar program. Path that goes all the way around the community. However, I'm a frequent walker on the canal path and I can tell you that there are some very sketchy characters back there. And so at times I don't feel very safe. And looking at the design, which would be a great path to walk around and ride your bike around, I don't know that I would feel safe doing it unless there's something in place, some kind of patrols or something to ensure the safety of the citizens of Los Banos, especially those of us that walk during the daytime with dogs, children, whatever. You got to ensure safety, otherwise you'll see yourselves on the headline news and you don't want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the, oh. Wait a minute. Yeah, you're on.
Stacy was kind enough to let me know for one of your questions, to make sure I got it right. The creek is already a designated path on the general plan. So it's, it's already shown as a path area on our, on our existing general plan, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to clarify, so it's a trail, it's a trail system that's designated and there's goals and policies within our current general plan to, to fulfill that, to implement that plan. So just to clarify that.
This just helps.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring you back to council level. And do I have a motion, recommendations, whatever? Press it again, Ms. Rivera. There you go.
All right, just one quick question. Mark, we passed this tonight. What's the timeline for M C A G approval? How soon would it go to them?
Thank you. I don't have control of that, but we estimate it'll be in April or May.
Okay, so just shortly, we need to pass it first and then shortly.
Yeah, and Natalia will bring it before as a, as a staff report to them.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if there are no further questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5947, approving and adopting the City of Los Banos Bicycle Pedestrian Plan.
Ms. Feria?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Silvera, second by Feria, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5947. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Let's go on to Item C, Public Hearing. To receive public comment, consideration of the 2017 Annual Report on the Status of the Housing Element of the General Plan and Progress in Its Implementation. Item C1, City Council Resolution Number 5948, adopting the 2017 Annual Report on the Status of the Housing Element of the General Plan and Progress in Its Implementation. And we'll go to Director L.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, all right. How's that?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you may recall that a year ago, right before April 1st, as we're required by the state of California to provide an annual progress report on our housing element. So that was the last time that I came before you. The government code, as I said, requires each jurisdiction to prepare and submit an annual progress report on its housing element by April 1st of each year. We're required to contain the following, the status of our housing element and the progress that we've made in the implementation of our goals, the progress in meeting the city's regional housing needs, and then any actions that we've taken towards the completion of our programs, our goals. Our cycle is from 2014 to 2023. So our plan is to take us to 2023. And we're required to be reviewed and considered by our city's legislative bodies, so the City Council. And then after that, the annual progress report is submitted to the Office of Planning and Research, which is the state of California, and the Department of Housing and Community Development with the state of California. But it does not require their approval. It's just, we're required to submit it to them to be in compliance with government code. So the purpose of this progress report is to remain compliant with government code and housing element law. It's to update the City Council on housing development and implementation of the housing element. And it's to ensure eligibility for state grant funding. And this proposed annual progress report ensures that the city will remain up to date in regards to the requirements imposed by future grant opportunities. So in order to be eligible for any type of C D B G, Community Development Block Grant Funding or any type of funding that is related to housing in any way, or really anything to do with community development that originates from federal type of funding, from HUD, then down to H C D, Department of Housing and Community Development, it is required that we have an active housing element. Otherwise, we are ineligible to apply for those types of funds. So public comment, public notices. Were published in the Los Banos Enterprise on March 9th, 2018. And that's a typo. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. And we are requesting that the City Council receive testimony and written comments. So I will not go over the data because it is, is quite a bit within the annual progress report. But as I previously stated, it does provide the status of our housing element and. But as I previously stated, it does provide the status of our housing element and where we're at in implementing our various goals. And it does provide the progress in meeting our regional housing needs. There's a table within the progress report, which is at the beginning, it's Table A, which shows how many permits have been issued and under what category, whether it's low income, extremely low income, or moderate income levels. So that's all within that report. And then any action that we've taken so far within the past year to implement those goals. So we're asking, staff is asking that the City Council adopt Resolution 5948, adopting the annual progress housing, it's the annual housing element progress report. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, any questions of Director Elms at this time? Okay?
Stacy, on that last slide, it was, it was a different number. So 5948 is the correct one. Okay, thank you. That's it.
That's it? Okay. All right. Any other questions from council? Okay, I'll, I will now open up the public hearing on City Council Resolution 5948. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring you back to council level. And are there any questions, or can I have a motion, please? Ms. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5948, adopting the 2017 Annual Report on the Status of the Housing Element of the General Plan and Progress in Its Implementation.
Ms. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Silvera, second by Faria, for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 5948. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, carried. Item number eight, discussion direction regarding driveway hardscape, lot coverage, limitations, and vehicle parking on private property in the residential zoning districts R1 and R2. And we're going to go to Community and Economic Development Director L.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. We have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
This one as well.
I'm getting good at this, all right?
So first, I want to start with, what we did, what staff did, was analyzed our existing municipal code and identified which sections of the code were in reference to driveways, hardscapes, any type of vehicle parking on private property in the residential zones, specifically the R1 and R2 zones. And so what we found was that there's several sections of the code that do regulate the parking of vehicles. And the first section is in Title IV, which is in public safety. And it, I won't list the various sections, but they are within your staff report. But just to summarize, this particular section, it is 4-5.1.01 and 4-5.1.02, and also 03. Basically, it prohibits front yard parking on lawns and other unpaved surfaces, and also prohibits the parking of more than three vehicles in a backyard. So what staff did was, we wanted to analyze, what's our existing setting within the municipal code? We wanted to describe that for the City Council to get an idea of what we're talking about. Also, within the public safety code, there is a section about nuisances. And it essentially states that it is a nuisance to park any vehicle on any setback, on any unimproved surface, whether it's your backyard or your front yard, or on any improved surface which has not been previously approved for parking purposes. Then we find in Title IX, within the Planning and Zoning Code, there is a specific section of Chapter III, which is zoning, Article 32, that regulates the use, storage, and parking of recreational vehicles, recreational trailers, and utility trailers. And then those specific sections are 9-3.3204, which talks about the storage of parking. And essentially, it is, just as it says within its title, it allows recreational vehicle parking within a side yard or rear yard with setback limitations, and it limits one recreational vehicle in a front yard driveway or other front yard paved surface. But the paved surface cannot exceed 50% of that front yard area. So that's that section. And then within the zoning code, there are also sections within the low-density residential zoning district and the medium-density residential zoning district that speak to lot coverage. And essentially, what it is saying is that not more than 70% of the total lot area within those zoning districts can be devoted to main or accessory building areas, parking areas, driveways, and patios, and that the remaining 30% should be devoted, shall be devoted, to landscaping lawns and outdoor recreational facilities, using swimming pools as an example. So that's the existing code and the existing tools that we have today to enforce hardscape and lot coverage, and also the parking of vehicles on private property. So just to summarize, what the code does say, there's essentially three points, that a maximum of 70% of the total lot may be improved, and a minimum of 30% of the total lot must be devoted to open space. Second, what it says is that lot coverage for recreational vehicles is limited to 50% of the front yard area, but that is only specific to recreational vehicles. And then last, that no limitation is put to the number of vehicles that can be parked in a front yard. But it does limit the amount of vehicles in a backyard to only three. Staff has identified some discussion points as we see, as we've analyzed the existing code and based on the discussion and direction that we received from the City Council at the City Council meeting essentially about a month ago, back on February 21st. First is that the City Council, a part, a point of discussion could be to consider and limit the number of vehicles that can be parked in a front yard. Consider a limit of the number of vehicles that can be parked in a rear yard. Consider a limit to the amount of allowable paved surface in a front yard based on a percentage, a front yard area, or frontage. Or consider a prohibition of the parking of any vehicle on any unpaved surface. So just some discussion items. Staff's recommendation, it is included within your staff report, is that we would support an amendment to the zoning code, just based on our analysis, that would limit the amount of front yard paved surface area to a maximum of 50%. The code references, as you saw on previous slides, to the residential zoning districts to a total lot coverage, but it's not specific to the front yard. So that doesn't limit a property owner or a property from paving their entire front yard and using that as a parking lot. It does not require any open space for landscaping at all whatsoever. So staff would recommending, amending the code to provide regulation for how much of a front yard can be paved. And then also to look into the parking of vehicles in the rear yard and limit that to only one on an improved surface only. I wanted to provide an example, just for illustration purposes, of what staff's recommending. So this is your typical lot. This is actually a 60-foot wide lot. So it's 6,000 square feet. It's 60 by 100. This is a plan that is currently being developed now within, throughout our city. And the lot is highlighted for you in yellow. And essentially, what a homeowner can do is cover 70% of their lot. That does include the home, the driveway, any accessory units, total coverage. That's what that would look like for illustration purposes. They would only need to keep the backyard open for open space. So what staff is suggesting, and this is an example of a 5,000, a little over 5,000 square foot lot, it's 50 by 100. This type of lot is typical behind Walmart and Target areas in the teal landing and sandstone subdivisions. What staff is recommending is that we would limit the amount of front yard coverage to only 50%. And that's essentially the driveway, especially in these types of lots that are only 50 feet wide. It would mean 25, 25-foot, 25-foot wide coverage on the front yard. So that's essentially what that would look like. And then, this is an example of a three-car garage parcel or lot, and it's an active development. This is an active plan, what that would look like. It is a larger lot. It's over 7,000 square feet. But if we were to limit the front yard to 50%, it would essentially be, what's in red would be allowable for coverage. And it's the driveway plus a five-foot side strip on the side of the driveway. So that concludes my presentation. What staff is asking is, we're looking for comments and direction from the City Council and the public at this time.
Okay. Any comments from council at this time before we go on? I know there's one person that wants to speak. Mr. Faria. Oh, oh, okay. Mrs. Lewis. Wait a minute, I don't know. Punch your button again. Try that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I have some photos I'd like to share with the council and with the people that we have in our audience and the people who are watching our council member by television. So I'm going to let Stacy operate the, okay.
Do I go back to the laptop? Okay. Okay.
Okay, so these, I have a series of photos that I've taken to show what we're facing here in Los Banos right now. What you see before you is a, three cars that are parked on a lot, and the black car, which is parked next to the fence. And it doesn't appear that there's a five, a setback from that fence. I think our code currently states that it's either a three or five, five-foot setback from a fence. So the vehicle is also parked on an unimproved surface. Go to the next one. Here we have three vehicles parked on an unimproved surface. It looks like there's some gravel in between the weeds as you go to the left. And the vehicle that's white, parked furthest to the left, appears to be on gravel surface, which is basically unimproved surface. Stacy? We have another example here of all three cars that are parked on grass or unimproved surface, and one vehicle parked under a carport on the driveway. This particular example is a corner lot where there are multiple vehicles parked on, in the front yard area, and also on the side yard along with a recreational vehicle. This is the same resident that we just saw the photo on, where it looks like there's been some additional concrete poured to accommodate vehicles to be parked on what should be long. And it appears that it might be a motorcycle or some, something of that sort covered up, parked on unimproved surface. And here we have another vehicle parked on unimproved surface with a tarp that you could buy at a big box store to cover that vehicle. This one has, it's in an old district where apparently there are two driveway approaches, but there, the vehicle is parked in what I would think would be a driveway, and then there is equipment parked outside the driveway area. And as we go to the next site, you can move it, we have another driveway approach where multiple items are parked there. It looks like there may be an RV or something underneath the tarped area, along with a trailer, and just multiple items in the driveway area. Another example of a vehicle parked on an improved surface in front of the garage, and then two vehicles parked on an unimproved surface on the side of the house. An example, again, of two vehicles parked on unimproved surface, and one can only assume the one that's closest to the house in the gray color. It doesn't have any rear lights, so I would assume that vehicle is non-operable. And they're also not parked at the appropriate setback from the fence. Another example of vehicles parked on an unimproved surface. I have no idea if it belongs to the house on the right or the left. But again, they're on an improved surface. We have two vehicles, again, two parked on improved surface, one underneath a carport, and two that are parked on an improved surface. This one was the one that really, I thought, was a bit overwhelming for me. You have an apartment complex in the back. You have two cars that are parked, the two cars to the left and the red one are really close to the fence, and they are on improved surface, but the front tire, I believe, is encroaching on the property of the neighbor next door. And then the neighbor next door, it appears that there are possibly three large vehicles in the back that are covered up with tarp. And then you have two vehicles in the front. If we move to the next slide, Stacy. You have these two vehicles in the front, you have a third vehicle there, and then it looks like there's another tarped vehicle that's right, right next to the black one. Go to the next slide. This is the same house. On the far right side, you have two vehicles that are in what we would class in today's ordinance, improved surface. There's a yellow jack sticking out, which I believe is some sort of hitch. And then there are three vehicles that you can see behind the fence, which would be in the backyard. And of course, at the sightline, the people who live in the apartments have to view this, these multiple vehicles in the backyard. Go to the next slide. And this is that same house, so you could see the hitch sticking out from behind that vehicle parked closest to the street. And right in front of that hitch is a vehicle. So on that particular property, there's, what, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine? There are roughly about 10 vehicles that are parked. And in the backyard, there's roughly somewhere between four and five vehicles. And I requested this to be brought forth to the council, not just because of what's happened in this particular neighborhood. And I've driven around other neighborhoods within our community, and I've seen some other violations, some not as extreme as this, and some that you wouldn't even notice if you passed them by, because you'd have to really drive slow to see the vehicle parked on an improved surface. But in some neighborhoods, I saw absolutely no vehicles parked in anyone's backyard. And, you know, we live in a different day and time now where... where people just kind of do what they want to do and they feel that it's their right to do it. But they fail to remember that other people who live in the neighborhood have rights as well. And this type of a neighborhood, the things that are parked in these neighborhoods like this are encroaching on the pri, the, the rights of other people who live there to want to live in a decent neighborhood. And I've heard from them. They've talked to me and told me that they feel hopeless and helpless because they can't get any help to get their neighborhood improved. So this, this is not just about improving the neighborhood. It's a, for me, it's about the long-reaching effects of our city. We want to have good quality of life in Los Manos. We want to bring jobs to Los Manos that, uh, are going to pay a livable wage for people who live here. And the public has to understand that the companies that might even consider looking at Los Manos are going to look at these things as well. They look at how your neighborhoods are. They look at how your school districts are. And it's just a whole total part of the package. So I don't, you know, I'm not here tonight to try to take away anybody's rights to do something, but I do want to see our neighborhoods improve. And I think residents, um, deserve to live in a neighborhood where they don't have to worry about the value of their home, whether they're renting or whether they own. It, the, the standard should be the same. So that's why I requested this to be, uh, to be brought forward to our council and for our staff to look at, uh, new ordinances in regards to all of this. Because for me, I would never consider parking a vehicle in my backyard. You, you've got, I think we have a code, uh, within, um, currently within our, our city that states that tow yards, uh, where they store vehicles and, uh, not tow yards, but wrecking yards, have to make sure that there's no gasoline, no flammable liquids that are inside those vehicles. So how are we to know what's in a vehicle in someone's backyard? And if, if we're trying to, uh, create a safe neighborhood for everyone, this is something I think we need to take into consideration. Not everybody thinks like that. People think that, it's my property, I have the right to do what I want with it. But your neighbors also have the right to have some peace and to be able to have beauty around them and to be able to have a nice livable, livable neighborhood so that if they do decide to sell their home, they're gonna get their value of return for what they paid for. So that's my presentation, um, based on what we have here tonight. I, I think it's time for us to really look at this and consider, uh, what we're asking our citizens to do here in Los Manos and to, uh, to upgrade and improve our neighborhoods and to, um, not have what I've showed you tonight being a part of, uh, any part of the status quo in Los Manos. Thank you.
Okay. I believe we have, before I go to council, I believe we had one person who wanted to speak. If it's okay, I'll ask that person to come up. Okay?
My name is Harriet Schott and I live here in Los Manos. Uh, I bought my home, it'll be twenty-one years. It was a beautiful little court. And for the past, I'd say, four years, most of the houses either, the regi, there's four original owners on a court of twelve homes. So a lot of the homes, when somebody's bought them, they rent them. And the problem is, it's not single-family dwelling anymore. It's several families. And what that has caused, my court looks like a parking lot. These people, they have a half a dozen cars each. Uh, it's, I can't even, for instance, when I has, uh, when my ch, adult children occasionally come to visit and spend the night, they can't find parking. My, in fact, in front of my house is the biggest part where you can park. And so I've got these cars, they throw garbage in front of my house. It's, uh, with the, uh, a couple of years ago, no, last year, there was a renter that had a paint, he was spray painting cars in the backyard. He had a tent and the neighbor next door, that's how I found out. I mean, he could have blown the whole block up. He's spray painting, he's repairing cars in the backyard. And they were a renter. Thanks to our code enforcement, they were able to get ahold of the owner and eventually those people got evicted. So that was a good thing. But there's still like six homes that, that it's just they don't care. You know, they can move to another house, you know? But they've taken, they've basically taken the, and if I were, to be honest with you, I'm sixty-nine years old. If I was forty, I'd sell my home and I'd move off out of there because they've taken over the neighborhood. And I don't feel safe anymore in my own neighborhood because of people coming and going all the time. In fact, this one house, they had something illegal going on for sure, other than painting cars. And, and that's what concerns me. I don't even feel safe now in my, in my court. And, uh, I live over in the Anderson Homes. And when we bought, it was the first court Anderson built. And when we bought, they said they were CCNRs. And they didn't, they told us as homeowners, make sure you park your cars in your driveway, no street parking. Now I find out the CCNR means nothing. I guess you can't enforce it or anything. But I'd like to see us get a ordinance that these single-family homes, if they're gonna rent to multiple families, that they're, that, that we have a restriction, how many cars per household? You know, you can't have ten cars, you know, in a, in a court. So I don't know, I, I just wanted to, that's what I'm going through for the last four years. So I just wanted to see if there's an ordinance. Maybe we can come up with some kind of new ordinance that people can't be parked. And some days, the cars are just parked there all, I mean, they never move. And I do know something can be done there 'cause, uh, if a car is parked more than, what, seventy-two hours? 'Cause I did, uh, have the police come out and move one. It'd been parked there like three weeks, had a flat tire, you know? But I don't know what we can do, but that's what's going on in my neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay, since I allowed this lady to speak, is there anyone else who would like to speak, uh, on this subject? Well, you gotta, gotta talk into the microphone, Will.
Ron DeLo, Los Manos. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but, um, Deborah, thank you for bringing this up because I think we need to get control of our town back. I don't think our town is beautiful like it used to be. And I think it's pervasive across so much of our community. And I think whatever it takes for our city council to give some teeth to code enforcement, um, to help us beautify Los Manos, I'm all for it. I see it on my street and I've called code enforcement out and, and they've done, they've come out and taken care of it. But, um, we see the same people do the same thing over and over and over again. And I want us to be proud of our community. And when we have businesses looking at our community, I want them to see a beautiful Los Manos and not kind of a slum. So, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Give me one minute.
Yes. This is a new subject.
Will York, uh, St. Patrick's Drive. I was a volunteer coordinator for, uh, City of Las Gattas, uh, with the police department. And we had seventy-five volunteers. And we did everything for the police department. Washed the cars, uh, we had patrols for vacation people and things like that. I don't know how many we have onboard now, but, uh, I think we should put a concentrated effort out to get more people like myself and Rod. We're, we're retired and there's a lot of retired people who probably like to have something to do. But, um, these folks that just spoke are, um, you know, they're right on. Um, my street has gone definitely downhill, like she said. Five, six, seven cars at, at one, one house. And I know they have an apartment in the back, but, and they got a long driveway. Nobody parks in the driveway that goes all the way back to the garage. So it is something that, I'm, I'm just thankful that I live on that side of town, not on that other side of town where a lot of these pictures were taken, I'm sure. Uh, it's bad. It's really bad. And the thing about, uh, a business coming here, uh, coming from Las Gattas, none of this stuff would ever be allowed in Las Gattas. I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. You know, I, I think what's happening is, you know, I see it too that, um, people are pouring driveways or pouring, pouring driveways around their homes. Uh, and I just heard something intriguing that says, uh, "has not been previously approved for parking purposes on a lot." Remember that statement, Stacy? Well, people are doing that. And, and it's making our town look ugly. These, uh, the ordinance that we have now is weak. It's, it's not what it should be in order to give, uh, code enforcement and, uh, the police, the, the power that they need to, uh, to take care of this. Now, the question comes up, are we giving them more work? Well, probably yeah. But we can't just leave it the way it is. 'Cause it's not great, 'cause people are taking advantage by calling a, a few rocks down an improved surface. And there are too many loopholes in this current ordinance and it, it's not good. So that's just my quick comment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Councilman Severa?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, I mean, I, I looked at all those pictures just like everybody else did. And I see, what I see in a lot of those pictures is a code enforcement issue. The, the, the exact rules that Stacy, the, or the current ordinance addresses, not all of them, there are some, there's some areas in there that are, um, I mean, there was that one house, just, I don't know, they had a car or something around every square inch of the, the property. I, that one, obviously, something needs to be addressed there. But I think if you're really, if you're really concerned with these issues, we can change this ordinance to be the most strict ordinance that's ever been known to mankind. But if we do not have the code enforcement people to be able to enforce these rules, then all, then, then it's all, it's, it's, it's really a futile exercise in nothing. Are, I mean, that's the conversation that we really need to have, is, what are we gonna do about code enforcement? Mr. York, I like your idea. You know, we have vital volunteers. Is there a possibility to having code enforcement volunteers? I, I don't know, I don't know the answer. I do, um, part of, you know, what staff's recommendation tonight was is to limit on, on the front yard spaces, you know, the ability that you can only have so much of it as an improved surface or, and, and some of, so much of it needs to be landscaped. But there again, you know, you, you look at some of these houses where if they're just pouring and adding concrete on, don't they need a permit for that? No permit for concrete? Okay. It, it just, it really, a lot of the issues comes back to, we don't have the code enforcement staff to be able to keep with the, with all the regulations that we have on the books. And I get it, I get we're trying to clean up some of this stuff that there isn't, um, that, that hasn't been looked at in quite a long time. I'm a big property rights person. I think it, you know, when you buy that piece of property, you have rights. And you know what? Los Manos is a bedroom community and, and these folks are, it takes two or three families to be able to afford the rent here and afford a mortgage payment here. And so are we sat, telling those folks that they're not welcomed here? I, I, that's not the kind of message I want to be sending. But at the same time, uh, you know, a can of paint and mowing your grass and, and taking care of your yard goes a long way. So I know it's kind of wanting to have our cake and eat it too, but I'm fine with having staff come back with, you know, some possible solutions to some of these issues. But really, I can't see myself supporting it if it doesn't have a code enfor, some, some sign, some form of mechanism that increases code enforcement for them to be able to enforce the new ordinance that we put, put in play. So, those are my comments.
I, I will tell you that, um, when I speak to the chief and I spoke, I speak to the, um, uh, the code enforcement, they come back and they say, "Mayor, I said, we can't do anything about it because the ordinance is so weak." And they're out there and they're working hard. But the bottom line is, the ordinance that we have right now does not give them any teeth and they have to walk away. Uh, Mr. Faria?
Can we, uh, can we deputize like vital officers to write code enforcement tickets?
Let me turn on this mic. Oh, you wanna come there? Okay.
Just having to do a little research, uh, on our annual report that we just put out. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for allowing me to speak on this topic. To address Mr. York's, uh, comment about the volunteers, we do have our vital program out conducting what we call our right-of-way program. And they're out addressing abandoned vehicles on the roadway. It's a process where we put a red sticker on the car or an orange sticker. We have to send a abatement notice to the registered owner, the legal owner. And they have roughly three days to move that vehicle. Generally speaking, it works. Um, and when they don't, we are allowed by law to, after we've placed our notifications, to tow the vehicle out of the, off the roadway. I'm just looking at some of the stats. Um, code enforcement worked on over three hundred and seventy-five abandoned vehicles by themselves. And I know there's some more statistics involved in that and I just can't see them right now, um, in a quick search on my, on my phone. Um, but they were out just a couple of days ago. In fact, what you approved on the consent agenda for the new cars is so that we can allow them to be out more often because we, we're replacing two, two thousand and four Ford Crown Victoria so that they have more reliable cars for our volunteer program. We are always, always looking for more volunteers at the police department. We talk about it all the time, all the time. And, uh, we would accept a, a number of volunteers and any individual who would like to come out and be productive in our community. I know I've had some conversations with, uh, specific individuals about that fact before, uh, before tonight. So, um, I think I've answered all of your questions, at least, that I recall. Do you have any other questions while I'm standing here?
You said, in, in the past year was three hundred and seventy-five cars. If you figure, well, we have eleven, ten, about ten thousand, eleven thousand households. I've read, what, at least twenty-five, thirty percent of the households have this car problem? So we're, I mean, even, this would be like ten percent. We, we're not even scratching it.
Yeah.
If we had enough vol, vital volunteers, would, and would they have to be in city-provided cars? Or could they be in their own provided cars? Could we cut, would we have to cover them insurance-wise? I guess that'd be something for the city attorney.
Yeah, there are liabilities.
Um, you know, and, you know, could they, you know, like they cover us, like with the school district? We have, we're moving things around and whatnot and they'll, you know, it's like a little rider, just tack it on. If we had more of these vital volunteers, who, 'cause I know there's a great need for it. There are some other things I want to talk about on this issue, but on this particular one, the enforcement thing, we're just overwhelmed.
Yeah, and that's one of the problems we face. Some, I don't recall who mentioned it, that we'll go out and abate it, an issue, and another one will pop up, perhaps at that house or the next door neighbor's house. And it's, I don't wanna say it's a revolving door, but it, there is a struggle to, uh, to deal with some of these appropriately.
Thank you.
Very time-consuming. Thank you.
A couple of other comments. And it is people, the, the pressure of the commuter. We are dealing with an, an explosive economy in the Bay Area with a shortage of housing there. And we've absorbed, we are absorbing a good number of their labor, nowhere near what. I don't, I, I just took a ride up to go visit an old, an old family place and, uh, up in French Camp. And French Camp, Manteca, San Joaquin County. It, I mean, the problem there, but it's multiplied by the larger population. It is, uh, it is a valley-wide problem, uh, in- It is, it is a valley-wide problem in these, in these valley towns, because we have been inundated with people. Teaching school, we see it in very large numbers, we see the children from over the hill whose parents are not home because they're driving, going to work, and so in order to drive, go to work, you have to have cars. And then, the, the income level, the, it does take multiple incomes to afford a house, and the housing prices are going up. How do we deal with this? Yeah, I think we need, if we could have some more code enforcement, any way, shape, or form, if we could put a little more teeth, if the ordinance is a problem, we don't have enough teeth in an ordinance, we just tighten it up a little bit, I think. The ordinance is, I think the structure is probably already there, if we just need a little tighter, let, fewer opportunities, you know, to keep more than 10 second chances, you know, before this, and maybe we can get a handle on it that way. It's a big issue, it's a big problem, and you can see it citywide, it's quite obvious. And in the case of, like, shot over there with six, seven, eight cars in the house, it's, I mean, there are a number of houses that have that, have a large, a number of these, a lot of new houses have multiple bedrooms, six, seven, eight, some of them are five, five, six-bedroom houses, which means they have a lot of people, and not all of them are children. So, you see extended families and people working, and it is a problem valley-wide, I can tell you that from my visits up and down the valley. Places like Los Gattis and Menlo Park have, they, they have, the, the cost of living is just, is so far off the scale there that, that's why they don't, probably don't have very many cars in front of their houses, because they're, they, you have a much higher income level there, 70% of the population in Menlo Park has, has at least a bachelor's degree, so statistically, people with higher education make more money. And so the people, less education, make less money, have to work, and there's a larger percentage of that, is commuters. I think Los Banis is about 20, 25% bachelor's degree. So, it is a, it is a systematic problem, and it's a big one. And I, I think all we can do at the city level at this point, if we can tighten up the codes, if you think, when we want to put a little limit on them, on the amount of concrete in the front yard, I guess we can talk about that. I don't know about concrete so much as, you know, driveways, you know, just don't turn your whole front yard into driveway. A lot of people want to do away with their lawn, which is, is a water conservation idea, so the other, other kinds of landscape. I'm rambling a little bit now because I'm, I feel so overwhelmed by the issue, because we just don't, we don't have the forces to write all these tickets and, and enforce all these tickets, and I really want to see that increased some way or another. If we could do it through the vital volunteers, I know we can't do it financially with, we can't hire enough extra police officers, so I think that, that would be the answer. So, thanks for the time.
You're welcome. Okay, let's go on to Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. I first want to say thank you to Deborah for taking those pictures, because a few of those were very insightful to me. I hadn't seen that type of crowding, and, I mean, I've just seen many cars at houses, but that type of crowding I hadn't seen before. For me, I'm just a little bit torn in between, of course, the manpower we have, and then also how intrusive we can be into certain homes, to certain people's, certain people's homes and what they have, because for me, myself, I have five people in a home, we're all adults, we're, we are currently renting until, you know, husband and I are hoping to get a room in the future, but we all, five of us in one home, we all go in different directions over the hill and just all around the valley, so that right there is five cars in our house. So, for me, that's an example of why I could see in some instances where you could have a few cars at a house, because you have people, you have people driving in all different directions, as, for my, with my example, excuse me. But I do understand the fact that we need to give our ordinances and our, our ordinance a little more power, so I'm definitely for that, but once again, I also would say I, I'm slightly torn in between, because I, I do know the feeling of needing a few cars at your house because of the commuting situation. So, I guess that's just my two cents in that.
All your cars run though, right?
They all run, yeah, they all run.
Look at those pictures, I don't think a lot of them run. Let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to say, we kind of had this struggle a couple of years ago when we were rewriting our animal control ordinance, and we ended up getting through it, and the purpose of that was to give our animal control officer the proper tools he needed to do his job. Our codes were so outdated that he couldn't do what he needed to do in a, in an updated fashion. I've noticed particularly that there are less animals roaming around as we had in the past because of the updates of our city codes in regards to animal control. And, and I realize that I'm hearing kind of the same struggle, because it's, it's around, do we have the, the manpower to do this? And, and I'm particularly, you know, a person that will lean towards our police department to make sure that they have the tools, and, you know, hopefully at some point in the future, more manpower, but right now, they have no tools. And in this particular area where I took this, these pictures, was a targeted area where we had a grant for the past two years to clean up the area. But because our codes don't afford the people who are working in that area to do their job, there was nothing they could do. And, and I, you know, I, I hear Mrs. Johnson-Santos, you know, her, her heart tearing, but I know that her front yard is not all cemented in for cars to be parked there. And I had, the, the one ordinance that I remembered was in San Jose, 20-plus years ago, about 25-plus years ago, that they had to change their ordinance because people were converting their front yards into concrete cities so that they can have a bunch of cars parked there, as well as on the street. And then San Jose took away, you know, because people were just storing, what do they call, recreational vehicle tops that you put on the back of your truck, all sorts of things in the backyard to avoid paying for storage fees. Now, I realize some people economically may not be able to afford to do that, but where, where I'm standing is that I want to look at everybody, give everybody the opportunity to maintain the value of their, of their homes within the community. And if you've got five vehicles in your home, and you've got a three-car driveway or a two-car driveway, they're still the public street. We don't have any regulation on that, and you can't regulate public, parking on a street unless you live in a gated community where you have those types of codes that tell you that you can't park on the street, or if your streets are so narrow that one side of the street is redlined, and you can only park on the other side of the street. So, I, I don't think what's being asked tonight is unreasonable. I think what I'm asking for is that this council give our police department and our city some tools. We're trying to give them tools. They're not going to be able to hit every household all the time, but when they see it and they have the opportunity to deal with it, there's a tool there. And, and we as a council also have a responsibility, and I'm hoping in the near future, we can find a way to, in our budget, to have some sense, some form of education in our community, whether it's by notice of reminders to our people who live in the community about things that are, you know, going to help keep property up, whatever the case may be, that we can find some additional tools other than just sending our police force out to hammer someone. But we do need the tools. So, that's what I'm looking for this evening, is giving our staff direction to provide appropriate tools to our police department, our code enforcement, and also to get this disjointed regulations and ordinances that we have to something that's more comprehensive for our staff to follow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask the police chief to come up, and I got a question for him.
Yes, sir.
Chief, do you feel like you guys don't have the proper tools?
I think in some cases, there are opportunities for us to take better advantage of laws that we don't have. I think, I think we're, you guys have all hit the nail on the head that we experience every day. Councilmember Johnson-Santos and the five cars in their home, they're being used, we see that, and, and we get called out because one neighbor will complain about the neighbor who's got five cars. And situations like that are just very tough to deal with, and a lot of those pictures, I'm hoping some of those pictures were taken when you went on your tour with Sergeant Seha, and, and those have all been addressed, or we're working on those, I'm hoping, in that area. But to go back to your question, councilmember, we do have some decent amount of tools, but if we're trying to get to that ideal situation here in our community, where we're addressing all the concerns to make ourselves the most picturesque that we can, I think there is room for improvement. And just like, I think there's a valid point there with the animal control ordinance, we're not going to be able to go out and address every single issue every single time, because there's just not enough capacity to do that. But I think having the tools available so that when that opportunity comes up for us to take action, reasonable action, that I think you guys will all come to a reasonable conclusion on, I think it is beneficial to us.
So, so what would be reasonable tools? Do you need more teeth in the enforcement side so that if somebody doesn't comply, now you can, you can punish them monetarily? You need, do we need to increase the fines? I, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, is like, like, what, what more tools are we looking for? I, I mean, I read, I saw the, the original ordinance that we have that says, you know, you can't park three vehicles, more than three, or you can't park vehicles on an unimproved surface. We have some tools there, you got to be five feet from the property line, three feet from a doorway that opens. Those are already currently on the books, so is it, is it?
No, I think those are sufficient. I think those, those are sufficient in, in many, many of the circumstances that we deal with. I think one of the slides that Stacy brought up was that coverage area of your front yard. We do see some individuals who will go out and cement their entire front yard, their side yard, and they do pile cars into that area. Now, that'll be a decision, I think, for this council to consider in how they want to approach that issue, but the idea of a percentage coverage of the, of a front yard of a lot is a reasonable consideration for you. That will give us some tools to say, we value the appearance of your front yard, and we don't want it to be a parking lot for vehicles. So I think that is a valuable tool for you all to consider at a given point, as Stacy has, has brought up. There are some other issues with abandoned vehicles in their front yard, but we have tools to address those. It's just, again, in a lot of reasons, or a lot of ways, it's a capacity issue more so than it is a, we don't have a code on the books. And a lot of those pictures, if they're parked on an unimproved surface, we can address that. It takes some time, but we can address that. But again, I think the more fundamental idea for me, and, and hearing what you're saying in this layers to this, to this onion is, we're going to, you're going to allow us to have just a little bit more tools in our tool belt to address some of those issues to make Los Banis more beautiful, and I value that and I appreciate that. So, I think together with staff, we can come up with some reasonable guidelines that we can follow, that we can present to you, that will hopefully address as many issues as we can reasonably.
And so then, do we, can we, when we're looking at this, can we speed up the amount of, like, so you guys go out, you have, you know, obviously, we would prefer that somebody comply with the rules, we're not looking to cite you first, but then, you know, you said it takes, it takes a while, you know, so can we, can we, I mean, it's a legal question, can we speed it up so they say, hey, listen, you got a week to abate it, and if you don't after a week, then we'll be back the following week with the, with the citation?
We can issue citations in, in a lot of cases, and in one of the statistics I looked at was, I think it was just over 800 citations, admin citations last year is what we wrote at the police department. Now, that encompasses every violation that we do in, in regards to the municipal code, but that's primarily code enforcement's task, is to go out, educate first, and then if they don't follow through and voluntarily comply, we go out and issue citations until we affect a remedy. So, yeah, I think, I think it's a mixture of both things. I see, I see a future where we are going to have a stronger ordinance to specifically deal with, for example, the driveways and, and that yardage, that front yard coverage area, that's going to help us keep Los Banis beautiful like we've talked about. We're still going to have the issue of people parking on their lawns that we're going to have to address, but I, I think you all are going in the right direction.
Thank you. And then the last thing is, is as we look forward to changing these ordinances and, and to, you know, if, if, if something comes up to where now its front yard has to be no more than 50% of it, or 50% has to be, or no more than 50% could be an improved surface, we, I, I want staff, when they come back with these recommendations to, I want to know in the course of that ordinance, what are you going to do about the ones that have 90% coverage? Are you going to grandfather them? I don't want to run into the, the issue we did with the carports, where then we have to come back and, and grandfather people in. I mean, we need to, if we're going to do this, let's do it right, and let's address all those issues, and so what are you going to do with those places that have apartments? Are you going to give them special variances? Because basically, you have two in, two in one lot there, you have a, I don't know what you're, a little apartment in the back and a single-family residential in the front. So if you're talking about limiting the number of cars, I, I, I just want, if we're going to do it, then let's do it right, and let's address all those issues, and I know that's a lot of what-if scenarios, but I want staff really to...
No, it's a very valid point, because we have homes in Los Banis that, to my knowledge, have never had a cement driveway. All they've ever had is gravel. And in our, in our ordinance, we have to, we have to understand that these, these homes have never had a improved surface other than a layer of gravel. So, I know of a couple of instances where we've had to acknowledge that and understand that, appreciate that, but that's a very valid point in how we're going to address all those existing conditions.
Okay, and then last is, just, I don't want to, in any way, I mean, code enforcement, they work their rear ends off. I, they're, they're good people, and they're so responsive to this council, and I know that it's, that I wish, they, I know that they wish they could do more, but they, but again, we are a complaint-driven code enforcement department. They don't have a whole bunch of extra time on their hands to just go out and look for violations. They're literally, as the calls come in, the backlog starts, and they start checking them off the list. So, they're doing an excellent job for, for the amount of manpower that they have. But again, those are all the things that I'd like, if, if we're going to do this, I'd like to see addressed when this comes back to the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Our, our current, our current ordinance lists gravel as an improved surface, and... Our current ordinance lists gravel as an improved surface, and those photos, some of them that Mrs. Lewis showed, it looks like compacted gravel. So, that might qualify with the rocks that are down there, and if people are going to be allowed to pour more gravel, it, what I worry about is, I listen to people out there, and provided, given more work to, to our, our code enforcement, but we have to balance that with a decent-looking community, and we also have to balance that with the, the fact that, that people live next door to this garbage, and they don't like it. And if you don't have that in your neighborhood, it's like the NIMBY theory, not in my neighborhood, and a lot of neighborhoods, you don't have that. We need to help the people that don't have the assistance to get this cleaned up, because people are not going to clean it up on their own. So, yeah, our, our ordinance is weak, we need some more tools. We need to, we need to fix that, and we need to start with those neighbors who are elderly and, and some middle-aged, who, who can't go up and talk to a neighbor and ask them to clean up their yard, because they're probably not going to do it. That's our job. The, the fact that people have taken advantage and pouring, as we saw in one slide, a, a person is just, you know, he has cars parked all the way around his house. I mean, I, I mean, Mason's not here, but I'm sure those cars are not drains, drained of fuel and oil. And that was brought up here tonight, too. So, I'm, I'm in agreement. Let's get some tools, let's bring it back, let's see what kind of tools we can, we can work with, and to have a, a balance with code enforcement, the tools that we need, and to get these things cleaned up. We have one area in town, I remember very clearly, 20 years ago, when they, they built the area in back of Walmart, and they built the Wal, the streets very, very small, very narrow, and people weren't supposed to park on the streets, because when a person parks on either side of the road, there's just enough... side of the road, there's just enough for one car to go down. And if that's the case, and not supposed to be parking on the street, what do we do? Do we just let it go on? That area was designed so people would not park on the street. And it's very dangerous because you'll have a head on because cars, two cars cannot fit side by side when people are parking. So we've had some issues we have to deal with, but I'm comfortable right now with, let's come back with something and let's see what we have. And as far as a street sweeper is concerned, you know, if they never get to it, because cars are parked there all the time, then don't do the street sweeping because you can't get to it.
And if I can make a personal comment, I agree. If, in a perfect situation, there'd be no cars parked on any of our streets for the street sweepers for the aesthetics of our, of our community, it's just not practical.
I know, I understand.
Not reasonable.
I understand. But if it was set up, it was set up. If it wasn't, I understand that. And a lot of our streets are wide, thank God, where people can park and two cars can go down the road. So I'm happy with that. But let's come back with some recommendations. Let's go to councilmember, did you want to speak again, Mrs. Lewis?
Oh, my light's still on. Well, I just will offer a recommendation. I don't know if it has to come from one person or come from you, but I want to recommend that staff come back with a reasonable recommendation to deal with this problem of vehicle parking, front-side yards and rear yards in our R1, R2 residential areas.
Okay. Had Mr. Freya wanted to?
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, all right, wow, okay. We have a motion, we have a second, and anything else we need to add to that, Stacy, or is clear enough? Hang on.
I think I'm looking for direction, though, in terms of, I mean, we can provide options back, but, and that's, that's fine, we can provide options back, but whether it's limitation of vehicles or lot coverage, you know, which way does the council prefer staff in what direction, but I can provide various options and we can take it from there.
You know, I think we're coming from the beautification of the property with people, and like I said, has not been approved for parking purposes. So these houses were designed with grass already and a sidewalk, not a sidewalk, a driveway. And now people are altering all that so that the houses are ugly and parking all over the place. So I think come back with beautification, come back with reasonable standards, come back with the limitation of the, all these things that you talked about tonight, and then we can discuss all this and all the ramifications, and in the process, give Gary and his people teeth to go out there so they're not going to get caught in situations. Is that pretty clear? Ms. Freya?
Yes.
Okay. So, Bill, you remember all that?
Got it.
Okay, you've got it. Okay. So we have a motion by Mrs. Lewis, a second by Mr. Freya, and everything else. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Thank you. And thank you, Stacy, thank you, Gary, for all the input, and I think we're going to come out with something that's a lot better than what we have. All right. Where are we? Nine. That's no report. So you're good, Stacy? All right, let's go on to item 10, city manager report. Yes, sir.
I was in the queue for the last item, but I'm okay at this point.
You're okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right. That's two okays.
Yeah. Just, am I okay to go?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everyone for attending the meeting tonight. Appreciate the comments and participation. Some big issues for us to address, but do appreciate folks showing up and the engagement by folks here tonight, so thank you. Mark and I will follow up with Mr. Bellotti and the folks that attended tonight regarding recreation programs, so just want to let the council know we'll be doing that as well.
Can we look at the outdoor tennis courts, too?
Tennis courts?
Yeah. Play pickleball on them?
We'll discuss the full range of issues they brought up.
Excellent, that's it. Okay. All right. Let's go on to city council member reports. And tonight, we'll start with, let me clear everybody here, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything in particular. One thing that just comes to my mind, and I brought it up quite a while back, in regards to a citizens academy, and that would be where our department heads could maybe be here in the council chambers and invite citizens in the community to come in so that they can see and understand, you know, how money is spent and where it goes, what things were mandated to do to keep a city going, so that they have a clear understanding how we're spending the money and why we spend it the way that we do. And all the requests that have come forth, even from council tonight, have been good requests, especially the Parks and Recreation requests, it was a good request. But I think that it's also a good idea for citizens to understand how we operate, how money is being spent, and under mandate what we have to do with it. So that's all that I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Silveira.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank the folks that showed up at the council meeting. It's always good to be engaged. We're the policymakers and, you know, folks, you guys elect us to make those policies and as we travel throughout the community, we hear from different folks, but it's nice to come and get your voice heard officially on the record. So I appreciate you guys showing up. I did have a conversation with the city manager and something that I had asked for, and he said he would do is, I mean, we talked about, the one gentleman that spoke earlier, you know, and they're saying they don't have enough money for referees, and so what I had asked the city manager to do, and he's going to bring back, is just, you know, an overall, just an overview of Parks and Rec and what's going on with it. Where is the money going? Money that's collected, you know, the youth pay to play sports in the, you know, PAL basketball or whatever it may be. Where's, how's that money going? Where is it going? So then that way, as council, when folks come to us, we can say, well, this is what, you know, when we charge this, this is what you get for it. This is what we, these are the costs, you know, that are associated with it. So I think that's something good that this council can look forward to, find out a little bit more information on our Parks and Rec stuff. And that's all I have for this evening. Oh, I just wanted to say hi to our finance director and our city treasurer, Kim Thomas. They're the only ones that didn't get to speak tonight, so.
All right. Let's go on to Mr. Freya.
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing in particular to report tonight. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. We love the conversation, we like getting input from everyone, get a better idea of how to serve you. And then I apologize for being late. We had the all district, all the elementary, junior high and high school bands all together at Pacheco High. Second year we've done that, and it's a big, big event. I stayed there long enough for my, to play along and work with my little ones, my beginners, because that's what I teach band-wise. And so, you know, we're a town of children, we've got the recreation thing going on. Very large percentage of children, and serving them in these ways is very, very good. And that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Santos.
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to our staff, thank you for the residents for coming. Staff, thank you for losing sleep over everything we're always telling you. We do appreciate it, very much your time, and I think the bike path and when we come back with the direction for the landscapes and, sorry, the hardscape will be great when it comes back. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Again, we met last week, was it last week, the council, when we met for the workshop? Two weeks, was it two weeks? Okay, almost two weeks. We met and all these subjects came up. So what you're talking to us about, we're already working on a plan to address. But again, the bottom line is, and I'm glad to hear people said that they would like to be on a committee to raise funds, or some of the things we're going to talk about in the near future, about how we can fulfill the needs of the community. And if it comes to pass, we're going to need everyone's help in order to make sure that we have a successful campaign. And later on, we'll be outlining avenues and what kind of help we're going to need. Last Friday, we had our crab, Rotary Crab Feed, and Scott, thank you for auctioneering. We raised about $28,000, over $28,000, and we don't know what the expenses are yet. So I don't think they're $27,000, but I think we did pretty good. We raised money for scholarships, for high school scholarships. We give away quite a lot of them every year, and I'm really proud of Rotary and the Rotary family and what they do. So if you attended that event, thank you so much for your donation, your contribution, the money that you spent on the tickets and the crab feed itself. We do this every year, we've been doing it now for about 25 years. And there are a lot of service organizations in town and a lot of school service organizations in town. And I've said this many times, we cannot do without volunteerism. We cannot run this city, the school district cannot run the school district without the volunteerism of the parents, the sports organizations, the academic organizations, and the organizations that are not associated with the schools, but are associated with our community and raise money. Many worthy causes. We cannot do without you. So whatever ways our, some of our decisions go, I'm hoping that they'll include volunteerism to the police department because we could use some more people. So thank you to the community, and it's staggering the amount of money that this community raises every year. It's staggering. But they do it, and they do it in good spirit. We want to make sure that the money that we raise stays in Los Banos, every cent of it, and that's our goal. So with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting at 9:56.